Good evening. Welcome to the Hoyoke City Council. We'll call to order the December 7, 2021, full city council meeting. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Grainey?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Leahy?
I'm present.
LeBron Martinez?
Here.
Lisi?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
Me.
Mr. President, could I?
I'm just gonna do some housekeeping real quick, Counsel Bartley.
Oh, sure.
One is, we just pulled the name. It was luck of the draw. I'm gonna go play my lottery tickets. It's me, so I'll vote first tonight, just to let you know. With that, I'd like to go out of order to item 35, if I can get a motion.
Motion to suspend the rules go item 35?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item 35 from Counsel McGee, a proclamation be given to Sue Kelly for 10 years of dedicated service as the executive director to the Hoyoke Children's Museum. Motion be to receive and approve the proclamation.
I'm a lute.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Wow, you guys are so good. We have the proclamation here. There was a timing issue on this one. Ms. Kelly is traveling to Florida, and what I'm gonna do is ask for a little help from my friends, Miles, Molly, Mac, to escort her up, not run all the way up here, but escort her up. So, let me just do this real quick here with my friends and my help here. So I did get a, an email from Lisa Ball, and I said, you know, can you give me some highlights? And she said, oh, I have quite a few. So, one, Ms. Kelly collaborated with the merry-go-round for a very successful First Night Junior for several years. She attended the museum association conference and returned with some great ideas for new exhibits throughout the museum. She worked with volunteers at the United Way for caring every year, received a grant in 2017 for the EBT family and admittance into the museum. She worked with the board on very successful fancy step fundraisers for over 10 years, and this year was its 13th year, established many contacts and contracts with the museum for grants for the Highland Street and Free Fund Friday in collaboration with the merry go round, and worked with the board to navigate through COVID-19 and the pandemic to make it a safer place not only for the staff and public, but for the families that went there. So, we wanted to make sure before you left us and took off to Florida that we would definitely recognize you for 10 years of absolutely outstanding service, not only to the city, but to all the families that you took care of. So with that, the city council gives this proclamation to Susan Kelly for 10 years of dedicated service as the executive director of the Hoyoke Children's Museum, signed by myself, the president, attested to by the city clerk, Brendan Mersch-McGee, December 7, 2021. Thank you for everything that you did.
I must say, one of the best parts of my job was watching all these kiddos grow. And these three here, they called me Sue Kelly, one word, and so does their cousins. But it has been an awesome job, really. I can't say enough about the museum. And one of my parting things that I would love to see through is that I approached the Markcott family, oh, quite a few months ago, and I was a big fan of Brian Markcott, and I'm sure a lot of you are, and coming soon, it'll take probably a year, but we're having a Brian, I mean, a Markcott Ford repair station exhibit for the kids with a scaled-down car that kids can go underneath with the electric charging station, and it's gonna be amazing. So they pledged $10,000, and we're on our way to reaching, probably, it'll cost probably $70,000, but I can't wait to see it through. I'm not going to Florida forever. Thank you.
Do you want to talk?
Thank you.
Remind the council that we, and this came from Counsel Bartley, that we give a proclamation to Rafael Rivera for the award-winning project for the annual arson watch reward, which was, we received a grant for that. Maria, I'll explain it, but I brought up Maria here, and you can see what's before you is the art that was sent in for the awards that we did receive, but here to help out as to what you see in front of you and our award winners, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us here. Thank you. Just a quick little background, I have been doing this arson reward program for 15 years, and we have really never had any winners until just about five years ago. Blessed Sacrament had a couple of winners. This is the first time that Mata de la Rosa took both first and second prize for Hampton County and third prize for Massachusetts in Rhode Island. So all the posters, this is our fire safety contest, all the posters get put in this hot of the press calendar, 2022 calendar. They haven't even seen them because we just received them, and their pictures get put in the calendar. So we hand them around all over Massachusetts and all over Rhode Island. Emma has the second-place winner for Hampton County, and Rafael has, Emma is September, and Rafael has a whole page in December. So that's, thank you for participating.
You're here.
Thank you. I do, I do want to thank Ms. Fitzgerald for allowing me to do this poster contest, and also my big, big supporter, Ms. Beverly Sabarin, our teacher. She's been very helpful for the past, how many years?
I'm sorry, it's like two, three years. Actually, these students are from Blessed Sacrament, not that.
I'm getting confused. I am so sorry, and I wrote it down over here. Mata de la Rosa has been competing too. They also competed this year too, but the two winners for the first time ever from Blessed Sacrament. Yes, you are absolutely right. Yes, thank you for, thank you for changing that. Yeah, she's been my biggest supporter. We've been doing this for many years. We do do it in the public schools. In years past, I've sent up to 800 posters to the, to the state, so we do also do it in the public schools. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, so we do have here, because the way it came to the city council was Rafael Rivera did win first prize, correct?
Third prize Massachusetts.
First prize Massachusetts. And we did not know about Emma, but we will definitely get you one. I promise that. So, Rafael, if you'd like to come up here. Congratulations. Great job.
Thank you.
And I will get the, oh, she's gonna get the calendars out.
We have plates to give off for everybody, and take it to the senior center, or take it everywhere, so they'll be all around home. Thank you.
All right, so we'll, we'll ask you guys out. Not sure if the camera can get it for those at home, but the two art projects are up front here. One, I'd also like to recognize and give a big thank you to Patty Devine, who always steps up for this council and gets those proclamations to us with her beautiful handwriting. So Patty, if you're home, thank you very much. With that, Counsel Leahy.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Counsel McGee, and all you fine counselors. I just wanted, if you guys could indulge me, if we could take a, an order out of the public service jacket, which is an order introduced by Counsel McGee, order that the city council appoint a new assessor.
All right, motion is suspended rules take from public service, an order. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counsel Leahy read the order. Motion is to receive and adopt and appoint an assessor. For those who are at home that might not know, Tony Delude, our longtime assessor, I think for 29 years, I think it was, has moved on to another role in the retirement department. So his office is, once again, is understaffed, and we need to appoint the chief assessor then to move on to then advertise to get a, the other position full, so they can get back to full staff.
Make a motion to go to the first reading.
Motion is to go to the first reading. Under discussion, Counsel Leahy.
No, it's very quickly, you summed it up quite well. Tony did a fantastic job. Now he's gonna be handling our retiree money, which is good, and, you know, I think, in my personal opinion, I think Ms. Burnell has been working that department for a long time. She's very capable, and, and very capable, and, you know, that's the vote I'm gonna go with tonight, but if we can go to a roll call.
Motion be to go to the first ballot if there's anyone under discussion.
So this is.
Counsel Murphy.
This is to appoint a chief assessor.
Chief assessor, yep. Yep. Basically filling Tony's role to then allow them to go out and advertise to fill the next role. Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McGee?
Burnell.
McGivern?
Burnell.
Murphy?
Burnell.
Sullivan?
Burnell.
Tomlin?
Deb Burnell.
Bacon?
Deb Burnell.
Anderson Burgos?
Burnell.
Bartley?
Debbie Burnell.
Grainey?
Deborah Burnell.
Hernandez?
Burnell.
Leahy?
Mrs. Deborah Burnell.
LeBron Martinez?
Burnell.
Lisi?
Deborah Burnell.
Deb Burnell appointed on the first ballot.
With your approval, you've appointed Deb Burnell to chief assessor. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
With that, we'll go back to Counsel Bartley. Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take, make a motion to remove agenda item one from the table.
Motion to take up item one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is laid on the table, committee of DGNR who was referred in order for a special permit for Delaney House log cabin to replace an existing double-sided billboard sign. There are conditions, that the height of the sign from the ground to the top no greater than 40 feet, that the area around the sign no greater than 672 square feet, and that the sign is allowed to be digital.
I'd like to make a series of motions to amend the special permit. The first one is that the, and, and just, just as a way of background, we tabled this because we wanted to hear from the law department, and, and I did hear from the law department this afternoon. I, so what I'm going to propose is that which was approved by the law department in an email to me. Of course, if anybody has any questions about it, but I'll, I'll make, I'll make the motions, and then we'll just, we'll see where it goes from there, Mr. President. So the, and it's not gonna be a whole, not gonna be a long series, but I just want to do them separately instead of having one long sentence. So, the, the first motion is to add a fourth paragraph, that the permit runs to the petitioner and not to the land.
I'll second it.
The second is that the permit shall not be, shall neither be transferable nor assignable.
Second.
And that the third one is that the petitioner shall not be able to sublease this without city council approval.
I'll second it.
Under discussion?
All right, so let me just, so motions are, number four, that the petition runs, it does not run with the land, it stays with the petitioner. It cannot be transferable or signable, and it can't be subleased unless city council approval. That was seconded for all three, under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, so we, we did have a really good meeting in DGR last, last month, and, and we, it was a public hearing, and if the, if the president and members recall, we had a, oh, there's one other, there's one other motion we made at the last meeting, I just realized it now. Perhaps I should make it now, but, well, I, I don't see it on our, on our agenda. Let me just think for a second. The motion was that the approval of the permit is further, the granting of the permit is further subject to approval by the Commonwealth. Wow.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Yeah, so, that's okay.
Technical difficulty, Scott was telling Jeffrey, and I was just getting the update, but they're working on it. So, Counsel Bartley?
I, I made a seventh amendment, Mr. President. It was seconded. It was, it was that the approval of this is further subject, the granting of this is further subject to the approval of the Commonwealth. So those, those are the total of seven clearly delineated conditions on special permit, just under discussion?
Under discussion.
The, we'll just do the last one first. You know, it's unbelievable, Mr. President, that we, we get, we, and Jeff did a great job, the assessor's office did a great job, all the Commonwealth and all the various entities are, are noticed on this. We have a public hearing, none of them show up, and that, and then I get, I get contacted later, oh, well, the, the, the sign might be 30 feet within, within a 300-foot buffer. And, so it's just, in, in my opinion, it's just the Commonwealth's playing its alleged upper hand and trying to use a trump card on, on, on the Hoyoke City Council, which I find to be disingenuous at best, so that's why I added the seventh condition. The other three conditions, and by the way, just so the public, you know, the Commonwealth has noticed all these things, they can come to our public hearing, either in person or on Zoom or on the phone, nothing. They, they don't, they didn't even show up. So, which is unfortunate. So there's still, still gonna be an outstanding question, or a couple hurdles for, for the petitioner to, to deal with, with the Commonwealth, but my understanding is that they'll, they'll get through it. The other three were all discussed in the public hearing back in, in November. They're all green-lighted, Mr. President, by the petitioner. The petitioner was, was okay with all of them, and furthermore, per the email I received today, a little bit after 3 o'clock, from the law department, these are all permissible conditions to a special permit. And, and lastly, Mr. President, I thought it best that we just lay them out neatly as this, as opposed to one long run-on sentence where it gets really confusing, kind of what we did with the ordinance for the marijuana industry. I mean, that is as clear as, as can be, so I'm pretty proud the way we, we rolled that out. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Anyone further on the amendments? So with regards to adding four, five, six, and seven, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So those have been added.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special permit with the aforementioned conditions.
I'll second that.
Motion is to receive, adopt, and approve with the amended conditions. Any comments? Any questions? Seeing none, hearing none. Motion is to approve. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit with those conditions.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
No.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
No.
11 ayes, 2 nays.
With your vote, you approve the special permit.
Mr. President, could I, I'd like to make a motion to go out of order and take up agenda item 30A, if I could, so just.
30? 30A?
Yeah, just so we can have the gentleman move on.
I'll second it.
The motion is go out of order to 30A. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 30A, the committee on DGNR who was referred, that license agreement between the city of Hoyoke and Edward Owen recommended that the order has been adopted and referral of the amendment to the legal department requesting amendment come to legal form as a communication to the city council. Counsel Bartley.
All right, give me a minute. It's funny, I'm digging out of my computer for half a second, I'll deal with the other one first. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we amend the license agreement between the city of Hoyoke and Edward A. Owen with a business address of 120 Front Street in section 1, scope of license, paragraph F. The amendment, amended language I want to insert there is as follows, which I'm gonna dig out in a second. So, the law, which I'm, I'm gonna give the amendment first, and then I'll go on discussion. The amendment is gonna be that notwithstanding, and I'll read this, I just want to read it through first, and I'll read it slowly, notwithstanding language of the contrary, the parties here too shall bilaterally confer as to the time, place, and method of the removal or alteration of the ramp, and said removal, removal, removal or alteration shall be completed in a reasonable timeframe and in a workmanlike manner. I could just go through that somewhere.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. President, just, and I've had a request, and I'm wondering if we might be able to turn the air filter on.
Yep, so one, can we open the front door? That's not supposed to be closed. And then can we put the air filter on, please? Thank you. All right, so Counsel Bartley's amendment was seconded, under discussion.
Yeah, okay, so that, that's the language that we, we approved, and it, just to go step back, Mr. Owen has a, a license to, to use city property, 120 Front Street is a building that, that he owns, I think, under an entity, and that he's put a lot of, he's invested a lot of money, he's got tenants in there, and now he wants to install a, a handicap ramp, and he's gonna invest another $10,000 to install the handicap ramp. Well, there was language, Mr. President, in the license that made it, in paragraph 1F, that made it uncomfortable for Mr. Owen, and the, and Mr. Owen's was uncomfortable with it because in an emergency situation, per the language of the contract, an emergency is aid not defined, and, and we, we went over this three different times. It's, it's almost impossible to define what an emergency is gonna be. But if the, the city has the right to declare an emergency, whatever they might be, but the city then would have had unilateral ability to tell him to break down his $10,000 investment and to do it within a demand that be done in a certain period of time. And Mr. Owen came to us in, in our discussions, and the majority of us agreed that the language as written seemed to be a little harsh, and furthermore, Mr. President, it just seems, I mean, the likelihood of an emergency, I mean, where his property is, it's, it's city-owned property. We are not, at this stage, giving him an easement. We're not titling the property over to him. It is a license, which is just another technical way to say that he has a right to use the property and to do things on it if we, if we give him this license. But in, in the, in the event of an emergency, he just wanted, and we agreed, to have some kind of a dialogue with the city and be able to break it down in a reason, within a reasonable timeframe and within, in a reasonable manner. And that's what we agreed upon in committee. That is not the way it came back to us from the law department, and so consequently, and I gave my language as I read it to the law department, and the law department did not ignore it. So that's not what we said in committee, that's not what we voted on, we voted on what I read. And so I just want to take what I read and put that into his license agreement. Thank you.
All right, so that amendment was seconded. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. Motion is to amend to that language as read as Counsel Bartley. All those in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed?
I'll make a motion that, and this has to be a roll call, Mr. President.
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we, the city of Hoyoke, grant the license to Mr. Owen as amended.
Second.
Motion is to receive, adopt, grant the license as amended. Clerk will call the roll.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve that one. Back to item two and three that were laid on the table. Hearing nothing takes us to public.
I have number three off the table, please. I'm not sure why number two was laid on the table in the end. I don't, I don't recall what we were waiting for there, whether it was a legal form.
It was referred back to where? Okay, so two should have been referred back to ordinance.
That's, that's right.
So that, two doesn't exist. It's an ordinance.
That's right, Mr. President.
Three is a motion to take up, it was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This is the committee on ordinance who was referred in order that update reflect that Columbus Day will not be refer, or that Columbus Day will now be referred to as Indigenous Peoples' Day, recommend that the order has been adopted, amended at adding the formerly known Columbus Day at, amended by adding formerly known as Columbus Day at the end. So with that, I turn it over to Counsel Lisi.
Thank you. Motion to receive the committee report and adopt, pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading, our discussion?
Yeah, so we had quite an extensive conversation about Indigenous Peoples' Day at the last meeting, and following the legal language that we needed to adopt in order to make Juneteenth a recognized and paid holiday in the city of Hoyoke, we need an ordinance. Excuse me. And one of the early concerns that was raised was how our employees that had union contracts that recognized Columbus Day would get paid for Columbus Day without being able to alter their contracts. And so what we decided on here was to essentially say that we're going to be replacing the term Columbus Day with the term Indigenous Peoples' Day, comma, formerly known as Columbus Day, so that we, we mark that we're recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, but at the same time, we are going to be able to honor any of the contracts that have Columbus Day written into them. So it's a pretty neat and clean legal form, and this is what we do in order to make sure that folks in the city are getting paid for this holiday.
Anyone, anyone else? Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have had many discussions relative to changing the ordinance, which, as we've had clarification on, still remains a federal holiday. I think we're sort of jumping over our pay grade here by taking a step if we are to do this. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the committee level, I raised the question to the law department, and the committee asked the law department to weigh in, and can an ordinance supersede what is a federal law holiday, adopted and accepted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? I have nothing against the Indigenous Peoples' Day recognition and, and the reasons for why, you know, Indigenous Peoples' Day would be a good recognition for, for people within you know, holiday with a state, uh, I believe mass general law itself. Um, I asked that question point blank. I've asked it twice, and I've never gotten any opinion from the Law Department. Um, I'm understanding the legal form was placed on our desk this evening?
We have the.
I have a copy on my desk.
Okay, so there's two of them. So with regards to Counselor McGivern, I would say that the best way to resolve this would ask the legal department to suspend the rules to allow legal.
I, I'm, I'm prepared to vote, Mr. President. I, uh, I, I think the federal law supersedes the, uh, any ordinance that we can create. We're just causing confusion as to what we're trying to do. I voted in favor of the resolution because I believe there are many concerns about Christopher's Columbus, the history connected to him, not just as the, the expedition of the, of the three ships, but when he was governor. And, and then, and he was, uh, he was removed as governor for things that happened on his watch. And we, we are learning more about the history as, as time goes on, and I think we should all learn more about the history of what it truly, what we can figure out, because it's, uh, there are arguments, um, back and forth as to what is truth and what, what isn't truth. But again, it's a federal holiday, and to create an ordinance, we heard the Law Department talk about that pretty much plain. She said, you do something like this, maybe by executive order, but you don't create a city law.
So here is a, this is from Kathleen Deegan, um, should be on your desk. At the end of section two dash thirty-nine, paid holidays for fire department employees, uniform allowances, uh, sub, subpart A, striking the term Columbus Day and replacing such term with Indigenous Peoples' Day formerly known as Columbus Day. All ordinance or parts of ordinance inconsistent hereon are hereby repealed. So that's one of them.
I, it's on my desk.
Okay.
Um, it should be in our hands before this meeting. I read it, no harm, no foul, but that's not the way we should be doing business.
So.
Mr. President?
Counselor Murphy was next, then Counselor Graney.
Yeah, I, I'm not, uh, I, I certainly do two things. Number one, I would somewhat agree with Counselor, uh, McGivern, uh, in terms of, uh, trying to find a way to make this, uh, balanced out. But I would also try to say this, uh, I think we need to recognize Indigenous people have been, uh, unjustly, uh, dealt with. But I also think that we have to recognize that, uh, and I'm gonna, for lack of a better word, I'm gonna say explorers to the western hemisphere. Uh, I, I really would like to see us try to unite and, and honor so that we would stay with Columbus Day, but recognizing and honoring, uh, the sacrifices, uh, and the injustices of Indigenous, and I would also include immigrant people. Um, you know, the United States, uh, is trying to, and has, maybe has not done a great job in some cases, but is trying to be in a situation, uh, you know, those explorers led to the immigration. Uh, and so, uh, you know, I would love to see us be in a position where we recognize and we honor Indigenous and immigrant people, because that's who makes up our, our, uh, country, our, our peoples that are our country. And uh, so I think recognizing Columbus Day, but honoring, uh, that Hoyoke would specifically honor Indigenous and immigrant peoples, which have made a significant impact, certainly in Hoyoke, so.
Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just quickly, the, um, the attorney clearly said at the last meeting that the way to do this is through executive order, as Counselor McGivern said. So it is a federal holiday, and I don't think that we can supersede a federal holiday.
Counselor Hernandez?
Sure. So what I wanna add is that there's no superseding the federal holiday. We can do this here on this floor tonight with this, with this body of city council. We've been discussing this for years now. It has been introduced by the children of Hoyoke, by many people that have spoken out in favor of this, and it could be done here. It doesn't have to go through executive order. We're not eliminating the federal holiday, and we're amplifying the atrocities that this explorer that, you know, that navigated these three ships and these three voyages and all the atrocities that came along with it. The biggest genocide, which is the Indigenous people, um, is the least that we can do as a form of reparation. This town is composed of fifty-four percent Latinos, Taínos, which is Indigenous people. We should honor them out of good faith. We don't have to send this to executive order, but it's clearly already the message here in this room is that it's not gonna be supported, and that's okay.
Anyone further? Uh, Counselor Leahy, then Counselor Lisi.
Yes, thank you. Um, Terry, uh, Counselor Murphy kinda stole my thunder. I was going to say something extremely similar to him, um, you know, 'cause as a son of, of an immigrant, to which I am, um, I, I recognize that Indigenous people and immigrants, uh, throughout, um, the history of, of America, uh, well, have been treated so well and kind. Um, however, we do have, um, we actually celebrate two days. Uh, we celebrate, uh, Columbus Day. We also, in the Hoyoke Public School, just did something about this, uh, on my birthday, November nineteenth. They have, uh, Discovery Day, uh, which is, uh, when Columbus, uh, founded, uh, Puerto Rico. Um, I think that we should have an additional day, as Counselor Murphy had said, combining the immigrants and Indigenous people and celebrating their walks, what they've done for the, uh, not only for the city of Hoyoke, but for the, uh, the United States of America. Thank you.
Anyone further? Oh, Counselor Lisi, sorry. Counselor Lisi.
Uh, thank you. So I just wanted to note that, uh, I believe that the point made about the executive order being the way to go was, um, simply to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day as a holiday. And what this body has done through the resolution is already recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day as, um, a, a day, okay, to, to be celebrated, revered, um, and noticed. And what this ordinance does, it doesn't say, oh, we're going to, uh, celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. This says that we're going to, um, allow people to have the day off on Indigenous Peoples' Day, comma, formerly known as Columbus Day in the city of Hoyoke, in parentheses. Because Columbus Day, as many have noted, is, is not going anywhere. It's written into many, uh, union contracts, and it, it will, and, and it will be recognized until the federal and state governments, uh, make those changes. But at the local level, we can, and you know, in, in the United States of America, we are a, a federalist form of government, and so things move up from the local level to the federal level. Lots of things that are innovations pass at the local level and then move up to the federal level and vice versa. Changes made at the federal, federal level have to make their way down to the local level. So in this way, I think we're just joining our voices with many others around, um, this state and around the nation that are beginning to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. Then I wanna also note that Indigenous people are native peoples. So immigrants are settlers. Colonizers are settlers. There is no equivalency between the two groups of people as, as immigrants and Indigenous people. So let's not muddle the waters here. It's, it's really straightforward. It's giving people the paid holiday. This is what the ordinance does in terms of create, um, a paid day off and allows those that have Columbus Day written into their contracts to have the paid day off for what we will call locally Indigenous Peoples' Day. But we'll let the votes go where they are.
Anyone further? Hearing none, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Say the.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Alright.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the change.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
One hundred percent yes.
Bartley?
No.
Graney?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
No.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Seven yeas, six knees.
You need nine for an ordinance change. That does not pass.
Even under suspension of the rules?
You need nine for an ordinance change.
Right, but the rules have been suspended, right, to allow, um, the legal council to speak?
I asked, but no one, no one seconded that. I asked and no one seconded. That's why the legal didn't come in.
Alright, item number four, we take off the table?
So item four.
Public comment.
Well, public comment first. Is there, is, was the list out there?
Yes.
Can I have that, please? Well, that's getting, I did have some emails come in. Um.
Mr. President?
Counselor Bartley?
You wanna do the same thing, or is it, it's because of COVID? You want, you wanna leave the, the new members out there? I think we're pretty full house today.
Yeah, I'd say because of it being packed, I mean.
Okay.
You can have, have them come in if they wanna spread out, but I know last time there were some people missing, they filled spots.
Okay.
So.
Just asking, thank you.
If newly elected members wanna come in, it is under the last rule, was suspended to allow you to come in. I apologize for not saying it earlier. If you want, there's some seats here. There's an open spot there. There's seats here and over there. If you're comfortable where you feel, that is good as well. But it is open to you. That was open to the last, last time, so it's ongoing. Uh, here, we do have, uh, public comments, and I'll try and, uh, be quick. This is from Linda Pratt, thirty-nine St. Kobe Drive. Uh, at the ordinance committee meeting on November twenty-third, many Hoyoke citizens spoke up regarding their wishes to strike language from adopted in two thousand seventeen that prevented a city employee from serving at the city council. These are people appeared before you perhaps spoke publicly for the first time. I'm sure it was not easy for them, but realizing their right to representation at that risk. Jenny Rivera was elected, uh, in, in the ward. During the campaign, I attended three meetings and greets. Twice I heard her say she's intending to forfeit her, uh, stipend. Never did I hear her say that she planned to give up her job. Never did I hear her plan, um, and then Israel Rivera stated that in the ordinance meeting, he had inquired for a potential conflict of interest. Uh, and it was assured by the Law Department that his new position with the HPS would not constitute one. At no point in the campaign did anyone notify these two candidates that the ordinance was in place. Barring all city employees from serving, the council may work well with some cities. However, Hoyoke was a large segment of the population as underrepresented in the city government. Barring even school department employees from serving disqualifies many residents. Please vote to strike the language. Uh, they can take the time needed to examine the language in the charter and determine that the changes are needed so that it reflects the times we live in. Um, then the next one is from Stephen Zanti from Smith Ferry Road. Uh, Columbus Day fourteen ninety-two, six hundred years ago, just wondering what one day, uh, in this prejudiced city council, with the exception to one councilwoman, are going to fly to, fly the Italian flag you learned from history and forgive and look forward. This is from Daphne Board, one ninety-seven Pine Street. I'm in favor of item twenty-six A, removing two thousand seventeen ethics ordinance language that may have been well intended, but is practice is confusing and overbroad. Two Hoyokeers ran for, uh, good races and won their seats in, uh, for the two thousand twenty-two. Uh, let's remove the obstacle since both are cleared by state ethics guidelines. Uh, Laura Clampett of one eighty-two Locust Street, public comment with regards to item twenty-six A, two counselors elected that potential ordinance changes impacted were duly elected by the people and should be allowed to serve. If there is a lack of clarity, uh, under section G two of the ordinance two sixty-nine, the ordinance should be changed. Uh, one of the counselors elected thought the advice of legal department and state ethics commissioners were told both, uh, shouldn't have a problem of holding the school department position as city council due to the due diligence of dawn. The counselors elected spend considerable time and money connecting with voters and won their seats in the council fairly. Uh, they should be allowed to serve. The ordinance as interpreted disallows anyone to hold the city position, not necessary. Uh, any conflicts of interest could be handled easily through, uh, recusal. Uh, in case, uh, the city, uh, sitting counselor who ran and lost stands a potential benefit of election results are invalidated, they should require to recuse themselves from the vote. Um, to avoid confusion, please amend ordinance two dash sixty-nine by striking section G two from the ordinance. Uh, this is from Owen Broadhurst, thirteen twenty-eight North Hampton Street. The municipal electorate expressed their willing regard, uh, chooses representing the election day. My hopes and willing that the voting public, uh, to their respect, those voting for Jenny and Israel Rivera have been nothing short of enthusiastic in their support of these two council elects throughout the whole, uh, process, having the right to representation in the council of their choosing. None of this should remain in doubt. It is clear in ample measure, both have sworn they will take, uh, in the Commonwealth, uh, co, uh, conflict of interest law, shall address plainly all the concerns you have regarding the conflicts of interest as confronted within, uh, their tenure. The voting public certainly no less aware than anyone else in the language of the ordinance has every right to represent, uh, its choice and choice it did, a choice it ought to respect, should be sincerely committed against, uh, having anyone within the municipal disenfranchised. Decision before the city council is, is the stark terms, then is, shall continue within the, uh, community to now organize, be heard, or respect their wishes. Their wishes are for these candidates who have been elected in a contest both legal and fair to be seated. Their wishes and their language of the ordinance, uh, is a barrier to be stricken. Let us respect the will of the electorate, and that's from Owen Broadhurst. Uh, Susan Van Pelt, please keep it simple and vote yes on, uh, the order to strike the prohibition of the ordinance for C. Employees serving as city councilors. Um, I am, I am sensitive to the issue around the conflict of interest. The appropriate remedy is recusal on specific discussions and votes. That all employees be excluded from and serve overreaching preventing employees of Gary Rome, for an example, from serving on the council because he appears in the chamber, uh, from so often a year, takes the advocate's position through the taxpayers association, serves as the mayor's transition team, and thus might unduly influence his employees' votes. The point is, everyone has the influences with effect to serve the councilors beyond the actual conflicts as defined by state law in the charter. It is left to the voters to decide, uh, who they want. Uh, last one is from Counselor, uh, former Counselor Patty Devine. Dear counselors, tonight you have the historic opportunity to correct a wrong in the pass of an ordinance tonight that enables two city councilors elected to take their rightful place at the city council. I respectfully ask that you vote in favor of the new ordinance change. This is America as it can be. With that, we then have those who signed up for public comment. I do have ten people who have signed up, just as a reminder. And let me just make sure, Hoyoke, 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 Hoyoke. The, the emails were what we adopted when we went to the Zoom meetings for public, yeah, it's, it's part of public comment to read those. Um.
So we've already had five speakers?
So that's five speakers. You'd have thirteen left signed up. Is anyone online? So one online, so fourteen signed up. So with that, they're all Hoyoke based on what I can see. For those, we can suspend the rules to allow the rest of them to speak because ten is the limit at.
The motion is suspend the rules to allow ten speakers, which would put us over our allowed limit to one minute.
Alright, so the motion is to go, allow the rest to speak, but it would be one minute for those who do speak, whether you're on Zoom or you come to the microphone. Um, I will time it at thirty seconds. I will just give you a heads up that you're at thirty seconds and you can, uh, kinda wrap up from there. Uh, we did take up this in ordinance and kept it open without limitation, but our rules limit it to the timeframe. So motion is to allow more to speak, passing the ten and limiting it to one minute. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So with that, we have Paulo Ferro of eight, one eighty Michigan Ave.
Good evening.
Nate, just remember name and address so it gets.
I'm Paulo Ferro from one eighty Michigan Avenue in Hoyoke. I am addressing item twenty-six A of the agenda tonight and asking to strike section G two from the city ordinance two sixty-nine. Uh, please let me say I am not a lawyer, but just for my hobby, my profession and my, um, civic engagement, I read a lot of legal language. I think, you know, this, I think, you know, this ordinance, it's extremely constrictive. And just to put it short, a family and community organizer and liaison and an elementary school teacher cannot be elected to city council. How wrong is that? How limiting is that? A newly elected junior counselor-in-large last time said something that stayed with me. They said, "Rules are bigger than we are," but we know they're not. Leader know that, that rules are tools created for a community to live harmoniously.
All right, so we're at our minute, just to let you know.
I think you can fix this, so please do. Thank you.
Also, please, while people are speaking, I know there was clapping last time and stuff, and I totally respect that, but please let the people speak so we can hear them. The microphone, as I mentioned to earlier, we're having trouble at home with the audio as well as the Zoom. So just out of respect for everyone else, please, I understand it, I get it, but we're having some difficulty here. So with that, the next is Helene Florio.
Good evening, Helene Florio, 31 Wellesley Road, here in Hoyoke, and I'm also speaking for Hoyoke Taxpayers Association. Before you make your decision tonight on the SIP rate for the residential and commercial amounts, I have a couple of things to point out. You'll hear from the assessors that the commercial section of Hoyoke amounts for only one quarter of the taxes paid, and the residents make up three quarters. I want to ask, I want you to ask yourselves why businesses pay far more per square foot than homeowners for far less services? Much of the answer to that question is that Hoyoke
At 30.
has the highest tax rate of commercial property in the state. We're number one. That's shameful for a city of less than 38,000 people. We have lost a lot of money this year to buildings that have gone to nonprofits. I will leave all of that information out due to time. When I do say this, we are $44,500,000 short of what we had a year ago.
There's a minute.
And that includes the $9 million that you have from marijuana. The increase in values is good. We do not ever want to be number one in the state again with the highest commercial tax rate. It's a killer. We need to work together. We need to live within our resources and means. We need to make hard decisions. We need to support business growth.
All right.
We need fair and equitable taxation. Consider this when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Guy O'Donnell.
All right, good evening. My name is Guy O'Donnell of 367 Apron Highway. And I'm here to speak in favor of allowing city employees to serve as city counselors. And I just want to start with a story. So a couple of months ago, my son came home really excited. I had an award that he got from school for perfect attendance. And he said to me, "Guy, Guy, guess who got, who gave this to me?" I was like, "Oh, who?" He's like, "Oh, the Black Panther." I was like, "Wow, that's really cool." He's like, "Actually, though, it was Israel Rivera. I knew it because of his beard." And he knew that because we had gone to a field day that Izzy had helped organize a month before.
30 seconds.
And we had a blast there. So we're talking about someone who cares about kids, cares about our community. Jenny I first met when she was at a food distribution, giving away food to people who needed it. So when I hear people say that it's an issue of ethics, I don't understand that because we're talking about two of the most ethical and upstanding people I know. And then also, and people say that the rules are the rules. Well, I would argue that if the rules are not, do not make sense, then we should change them. And that's what we have an opportunity, opportunity to do here today. So I hope that you guys will do that. Thank you.
Next is Richard Purcell.
Richard Purcell, 279 Suffolk Street, Hoyoke. I think we need elected champions, not obstructive Trumpians. This is not to stop the steal in Hoyoke. These people were elected, duly elected, and imposing that they can't get both stipends, their regular pay and the stipend, is a form of economic sanctions. This isn't the January 3rd insurrection, January 6th insurrection in Washington DC. They're duly elected, they should be placed on the board, and by the way, let me say that again, and by the way, because somebody else is going to say, "And by the way."
30 seconds, just to let you know.
Never mind, thank you.
Let me, let me be clear. I'm just giving you the heads up on timing. I'm following the rules that were given to me. So if you want to speak, you still have 30 seconds left. I'm just giving you the heads up, that's all. All right. With that, the next one is Jose Maldonado Velez.
Hi, everyone. Jose Maldonado Velez, 210 Pine Street. So, thank you, President McGee, thank you, City Council for letting me speak. I'm here to speak on the agenda as a whole. Just, someone just said, "Rules are rules." And that's something that I've been hearing a lot lately, and the reality is, this is why we're here. You're right, rules are rules, but this is why this body convenes twice a month to make sure that the rules are serving our people properly. So right now, 26A is a rule that's not serving our people properly. So I'm asking you today that you vote yes to remove the language from 2G in the ordinance and make sure that the two people that were elected get to serve, but there's also bigger, bigger than Jenny and Izzy. This is also about creating a system that makes sure everyone has access to it, and that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Edward Owen. He left? He left, okay. Next is Kevin Jordan.
Kevin Jordan, 18 Raymond Avenue, person with the most votes for city council this year. Just thought I'd put that out. So I'm a big supporter of democracy. I'll first say, everybody knew the rules crystal clear before the election. I even went to the school department and tipped them off in late August about all these rules. Apparently, I was told, one of them was even told by someone from the school department. And I know two people that went and spoke to one of the other candidates about these rules, so that's just a fact. School department perhaps should have done more research and have, should have advised their people a little better. But as far as the rule goes itself, it's 125 years old, codified again in our newest ethics ordinance. It only confirms again why we needed an ethics ordinance because of unethical things that go on. For example, like trying to change the rules after the election's over. Allowing the mayor and department heads to start hiring council candidates and counselors-elect and then planting them in city jobs is a recipe for big trouble. And this is the other thing, you get shouted down if people don't like what you have to say.
Your time is up. The time is up.
Oh, 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 oh. I'm being shouted down, Mr. President. This is democracy in Hoyoke, apparently.
Time to finish up.
What better way to influence the council than to start hiring counselors-elect or giving people jobs before they're sworn in? If these rules are lifted, we will be flooded in the future with more and more city employees on the city council. Once we open the floodgates, we will start.
I, I have it, I have it.
They don't like it when you have something they don't want to hear you say. It will become a smog of corruption. And by the way, come January 3rd, I'm going to shut my mic off.
Order, order, please.
Get out of here.
Order, oh, oh, stop, stop, stop.
I'd like to reclaim my 30 seconds, please.
Nope, nope, that time is passed.
I'd like to reclaim my 30 seconds.
That time is passed, sir. We are now on to Cocaine Givner. All right, everyone, let's settle down. Let's settle down. Thank you. All right, all right.
Hi, my name's Cocaine Givner. I live at 13 O'Connor Avenue. And I just would like to support Jenny and Izzy because I do feel and know that they were elected to their seats. They deserve to serve. I don't think that there's a conflict of interest. I've said before that ordinances are suggestions made by this council and that the actual law that is 125 years old, as someone just reminded us, came in when schoolhouses existed and the people who worked for the schools were like five people for like a whole city. So it probably wasn't a problem back then.
At 30.
But I think we've all seen that they take part in our community, they do a lot of great things, and they deserve to serve. And I think if it's a question of striking down this ordinance, it would be a great idea for us. And if we can't, we can work on it moving forward. Either way, I think they definitely deserve to serve because they were elected to their seats. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Israel Rivera.
Hello, thank you all for giving me this one minute, and I'll just take one minute.
Name, address?
I was going to get to that. I just wanted to make sure.
Don't want to waste your time. I don't start until we get the whole name.
Nah, don't worry, but I'm not going to do all that, none of that grandstanding stuff. Israel Rivera, 25 Willow Street, Hoyoke, Mass. I just want to say thank you to everyone that supported me. I want to say thank you to all the people that I don't know, that have emailed, called in, come in to speak, that have never spoken before, if they've never spoken before. I truly appreciate it. That is truly democracy, not coming in here and grandstanding and trying to bully people. If you guys think that that's okay, then you guys can vote against striking the language, and that's cool. If you guys think that Jordan coming in, wait, that a counselor coming in, or a future counselor coming, I'm learning, I'm sorry. A future counselor coming in can come in and flex muscles on you guys and make you guys feel like you guys are doing something wrong when you genuinely feel like you might be doing it right? That's on you guys, you know? That's fine. I, I don't mind. Either way, I'm going to be here come January 3rd, believe it or not. And when I come here, I'm coming with the force. I'm coming with the people, because I am voted by the people. The second highest, 21 votes behind the guy that's been here for 40 years and gets no accountability for what our city looks like today. Time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Last on the list for this list, and then we'll go to Zoom, is John Aubin.
Hi, John Aubin from 42 Clinton Avenue. I'm actually here to speak about the moratorium that's being proposed, the order for a moratorium on manufacturing and growing of marijuana. The ordinances that were put together to protect the citizens for this industry, for manufacturing and, and growing, not retail, I have no problem with that, are inadequate to protect the businesses downtown and the people downtown from the odors and the health issues related to the air quality from these manufacturers. There need to be adequate buffers. It needs to be studied to protect downtown and the plan for downtown, because we do have a mixed-use urban development plan. And right now, there are 69 community agreements, and they're scattered throughout downtown. More than half are growers. And if we don't address this and look at it carefully, it's going to do damage to the health of the businesses and the people living downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. We have online, or was it Lynn Haran online?
Yes, can you hear?
Yes, name and address, please.
Lynn Haran, 100 Southampton Road, Hoyoke. Go ahead.
You're on, go ahead.
All right. I'm here in support of Counselor McGee's amendment and in support of retaining newly fiercely wonderfully elected counselors Israel Rivera and Jenny Rivera. Mostly what I want to say tonight is I'm kind of appalled, not at an issue of conflict of interest, but the contentious, aggressive way that it was presented and the timing. I feel like in view of a historical election in Hoyoke that finally will provide us, yes, will provide us with the new city council
You're at 30.
that looks like us and will act like a greater population of Hoyoke for the betterment of all of us. I cannot see where an issue with someone working in that particular position for that low an income with so little power ever becomes a conflict of anything seriously that they will have to be judged on, whereas hypothetically, or maybe not so hypothetically.
We're at our time.
Okay, thank you for your time, and thank you so much for all of Hoyoke who came out last week and spoke so eloquently, better than I am tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Helene Busby. Helene, are you there?
Hello, sorry. Helene Busby, 90 Lookline Avenue in Hoyoke. I just want to, you know, very briefly, and so many people have already raised really important points. I think the city council in Hoyoke, excuse me, has such a huge mandate because they're trying to, you know, make policy and rules in very fast times and with lots of things going on. And, you know, I think what happened in 2017 was not everything was envisioned. The impact and all the people that would be excluded. And so that happens all the time. I'm an attorney, and we see times where laws are passed and, you know, they're not really, they're not really going to serve, and they're not really the issue. So it's a legislative fix. That's all this is tonight, and I hope that, that that is what happens, that the legislative fix happens, and the ordinance language is changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, next is JR.
Can you hear me?
Yep, can hear you.
Hey, everybody. JR here, John Rivera from 2 Laurel Street, Hoyoke, Massachusetts. And I'm speaking on the behalf of, or in favor of 26A. I think that this is a pure obstructionist piece that we're on, and it will not carry into the next election or even in the next few elections. And if it does, I hope so, and I hope that it will be heavily resisted against until those that are in favor of such obstructionist efforts get tired of their efforts. The voters have spoken, and thank you so much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Ethan Gass?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Ethan Gass. I represent Small Wonder Cultivation at 109 Lyman Street. And I, what do I have, 30 seconds?
Well, I'll let you know when 30 seconds is up. You got a minute, so we'll, we'll start you, we'll start you now.
Okay, so I understand Mr. Aubin's concerns with the odor. However, there hasn't been really many studies done as far as the odor control. And, you know, with this, obviously, whether we want to call it a mistake or a mishap with the legislation and the writing of the ordinance, this has caused a lot of problems with, you know, the applicants that are.
Just saying at 30.
This has caused a lot of problems with the applicants that are ready to move forward and help improve the city. So while we're trying to improve the city, we're kind of at a standstill because of all this stuff. And I just wanted to voice my opinion.
All right, thank you. What else, sir? And that is it for public comment. So now that takes us to communications.
Can we, can we take out an order 26A and vote on it, since we've had already a lot of speakers on that?
So a motion is to go to out of order to 26A. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 26A, the committee on ordinance was referred in order that the city council amend ordinance 2-69 by striking not in G2 from the ordinance. The section states no employee of the city shall simultaneously serve at the city council during the time of employment. Recommend that the order be adopted. So motion would be pass the first reading.
Receive, adopt, pass the first reading.
Our discussion, Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. So we had a very robust conversation last week in ordinance committee. Many, many members of the community came out, and really, all except for. Many, many members of the committee came out, um, and really all except for, um, maybe one or two speakers, um, were speaking in favor of this amendment. Um, you know, at the end of the day, we have some charter language that, um, is very old and slightly ambiguous. And so, um, regardless of what happens with the ordinance changes before us, there, there is, um, a need to clarify, um, our, our charter language, um, at some point. So that would be a task for perhaps the, the new council. Um, this however, um, is addressing, this twenty-six A is addressing the, um, ethics ordinance that was passed in twenty-seventeen that was a reaction in some ways to, um, a police officer that was holding, um, a city council position for a number of terms. And so, um, the ethics ordinance that we passed in twenty-seventeen was in some ways, um, a, a reaction and attempt to, um, make sure that conflicts weren't present. Um, but what we've seen in that time is that when conflicts are present, counselors simply, um, need to recuse themselves from those votes. And so there is that protection for the voters in place that comes from, um, just, you know, the state ethics rules, um, and the way that we, uh, enact them and file, um, you know, language that says, oh, there could be an appearance of a conflict here, I'll, I'll abstain altogether. Um, the other thing that I think is important is that, um, we are representatives. So each individual city counselor is a representative of the public's will. And we just had a citywide election in which these, um, individuals were duly elected to their seats. And so if, um, the voters do not have an issue with, um, these individuals being seated, then I think that it's our job as city counselors to amend any language that could stand in their way. The, the last thing I'll say here is that I believe what we learned at the last ordinance committee meeting is that, um, everybody will be seated and it's only once the counselors are seated that a seated city counselor could raise the charge that someone is seated improperly. So I think that that's important to keep in mind for, um, any city council who believes themselves to be a representative of the people and the public, uh, that if you're going to raise a charge against two of your duly elected colleagues, um, you're really not representing the will of the voters or the will of the public, um, to whom you're beholden and should, should be representing. So I think, um, at the end of the day, we adopted the amendment that was, uh, in ordinance. We adopted and, and recommend the simple, um, text change that would, um, remove the language that says that no employee of the city shall simultaneously serve on the city council during their time of employment. Um, it makes it very straightforward that there is no conflict there. Um, and the last thing I would say is actually that, um, regardless of any heads up that was given to the school department, um, these are citizens of our community. So it's not the school department's responsibility to like rein in their people or notify their people. They have no control over these individuals in terms of what sort of public role or public service they choose to give to our community. This is the school, does not own these people. And these people have stepped up once to serve our community in, in the schools in this particular instance, and now they're, they've stepped up and, and have been duly elected to serve in their role, um, in the city council. So the majority of the ordinance committee supports this amendment and we hope that the full city council supports the amendment as well.
Counselor Vacan.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, um, I will give the minority report on this matter out of that committee. The ethics law that we have on our books and our local ordinances are not suggestions, they are local laws that are passed by a supermajority of this body. The law that is on our books was not done as a knee-jerk reaction to a police officer serving on the city council. I believe his last year of service was in twenty-eleven. The ethics law that we put in place that supports and puts in plain English the language that has been in our charter for years was done when there was no election taking place. There were no conflicts for people. They weren't put in a position after the fact of having an opportunity or not having an opportunity. Similar to this, we have had orders, one in particular this year, sent to charter and rules. One of them, and I'm giving it by way of an example, is to make a position that's currently elected appointed. But in committee, we had discussion and tabled that matter because we did not wanna change the conditions of a position in the city during an election year. Carry forward on this matter before us tonight. If we want to debate and potentially change our local law relative to an employee being able to simultaneously serve on the council while an employee of the city, it would properly be taken up as the ethics law was when there is not elec, an election, when there has just not been an election. We had people write in, at least one, who said they would have run for election, but they knew they couldn't. So for us to be sitting here tonight to create a law for one or two people is as wrong as it is to exclude the people who might have run had we changed the law in a timely and transparent manner for the entire community. So that is my argument. When you are in a circumstance where, and I'll use a sports analogy, when you get to the end of the game, you don't get to go back, change the rules and come up with a different score. Now, having said that, there is not one person that I have heard at the microphone who objects in any way, shape or form to the fact that the folks that have been named by others at the microphone earned the votes that they got. And there is no one saying, if they choose not to work for the city, that they will not sit on this city council. I wanna be very clear about that. There is nothing in the debate that is saying the people can't sit, but the people need to make a choice. The choice is they want to sit on the council as elected or they want to keep their city job. But that is their personal choice. And I think for people to be coming in acting like we are being obstructionist is just simply not true. So I will not be supporting this. Um, on the other hand, I would say that if people wanted to bring it up after to revise it and review it, I'd be open to the debate. But keep in mind, when you work for the city, you have a boss. So when I'm elected by the people who vote me in, they're in a sense my boss. When you're sitting here in the chambers and your boss is the head of a department and you were elected by the people, well, now you've kinda got two masters. And that is the fundamental conflict of interest that exists, which is what our ethics law is put in place to prevent. And so I think it's good law, I think it's good government. Our neighboring city of North Hampton has the same law. Our sister gateway city of Lowell has the same law. There are many cities that do. Um, we are not an exception, um, in this regard. So I cannot support this at this time and thank you for your time.
Anyone further? Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd, I'd just like to, uh, speak in favor of the ordinance change, but maybe for different reasons than what we're hearing across the board. Um, a long, long time ago, when I first joined the then Board of Aldermen, that man above Counselor Anderson Burgos's head, Jim Shay, James Shay was our city clerk, clerk for some forty-something years, incredible knowledge of what law is, incredible knowledge of our relationship with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Mass. General Law, the charter and what ordinance are. And, and he taught many of us the proper way to go about this. And I, I respect our law department, but our law department cannot dictate, certainly, I'm not suggesting anybody not to take the advice or not to heed legal opinions when given, but they don't dictate how we vote. I, I suggest that when you vote on this issue, you begin with Mass. General Law. It's first. We cannot have a govern, government, municipal government without a connection, without an agreement with Mass. General Law. And that's what our charter is. It's a covenant that connects us to the Mass. General Law. Most legislatures and governors will say home rule petitions, home rule law is important to them, but they will not let you supersede the Mass. General Law by creating an ordinance. Yes, we can create ordinances that are stricter than Mass. General Law, but we cannot deny the intent of a Mass. General Law simply by creating a city ordinance. There's a lot of good in the ethics ordinance, but I think it goes too far and it's, it speaks too loud on this issue here. I don't think anyone is challenging the ethics of our two newly elected counselors, certainly and by most important, the voter spoke. It's the voters who put them in, in place. The voters fully understand, I'm sure by the, uh, through the campaigns and literature and what was going on, that they were employees of the, uh, of the school department. The ethics isn't the ethics of their character. I'll give you a prime example of what we have to watch out for. Um, Donnie Welch as a police officer took many votes that he could not take when it came to the police department, but he served the city and the city council and his, his constituents very well. Two people from, two individuals from the school department, early next year, maybe as early as February, we are gonna have the question of building a middle school before us. Thirteen votes, you need nine votes to pass the bond necessary to build that school. You need nine votes to pass the bond necessary to get through an, an architectural design phase. If we start with eleven votes, three individuals on the council who are against that project can kill the middle school project. And that's, that's the ethics that I think counselors such as, as former Counselor Jordane are talking about. But again, I hand my hat, hat on Mass. General Law that allowed, I talked to our former city's listener over the weekend, allowed Don Welch as a police officer to serve on this board and it worked out well. The ordinance to me is well-intended, but it should not be what we hang our hat on to, to supersede what the Mass. General Law says. You can serve on the, on the council, you can serve on, you know, on, on an elected body, which can only take one salary. The charter is old and we've tried to change it, we've tried to revamp it. It's very difficult because of the way charter changes take place to, to bring those, that language up to date. We do it more piecemeal than we do it across the board. And if you look at the opinion of the city's listener, and I've asked for some help on this, you know, it, it speaks of the question in the charter of what is, what is an officer and what is an employee and what was the intent to the charter? It's, it's, if anything, it's ambiguous and somewhat vague. But the one thing I very much disagree with the interpretation of the charter and the legal opinion we get is that it's the city council who polices this issue. We have never policed each other. It's an individual who sits here, duly elected, who must police theirselves when it comes to ethics and stand the test and judgment of the exas, the Ethics Commission of, of Massachusetts, not the city council. You know, if we start challenging each other, we're gonna be in for a long term. It's not our job. It's our job to be ourselves, to make sure that we stand the test of ethics and that we do what we were put here for by our voters, our constituents, the job to make this city better and to work on issues and to keep going forward on issues. But this room was dedicated to Jim Shay. You know, to me, he's, he's one of the, uh, one of my heroes when it comes to city government because he was under, under the radar, but he was always there. He was always in the, in the forefront of how to do what we intend, what we set out to intend to do. And that sometimes is just as important as what we do.
Counselor Lisi.
Um, thank you. I, I just, I mean, I think I just heard in some of the comments that were made that, um, individuals who work for the school department would not be able to, um, vote on bonding for the new schools. And I, I don't think that we should take that as, uh, a word. I think that you'll have to get a legal opinion on that or an ethics ruling, um, because there's no financial benefit to the schools to building a new school. All of the benefit is a public and universal benefit for the community. So I, I just wanna make sure that we're not going to start moving into, um, the next term, the next era with that sort of assumption in our minds since it was put up today in, in that way. Uh, you, you know, I'll just reiterate the, the points that, that I made, uh, earlier in that, uh, you know, we're representatives, we represent the will of the public and we shouldn't think that we know better or more than the public when it comes to, um, creating, um, the rules of, of the game here. And yes, they, they are the rules and they are the laws that we need to follow, but I think in this case, what we have seen is that, um, it's quite an overreach because we do not have, um, policy or, um, budgetary control over the schools in particular. And furthermore, um, individuals have to recuse themselves to, um, vote where there, where there is a, a potential conflict. And, um, in this case, um, and also when we were naming the Ward Two City Counselor in the time of that vacancy, um, what we've seen is that there is a, um, a disproportionate negative impact on, um, individuals of color, specifically of Latinx descent in this community because we have already, if, if this is going to be the case that the law stands, the ordinance stands, I should say, um, that we would have, um, precluded, um, three, three folks from taking those seats or, or pursuing those seats because of the way that law is written. And, um, I think that there, uh, it's, it's just problematic in that sense and we should be reflecting on, again, the, the impact of the ordinance in the way that it's written and if it's truly reflective and holds up the values and will of the community. Thank you.
Anyone further?
Mr. President.
Counselor McGivern and Counselor Vacan.
I just have to clarify just two things, um, to Counselor Lisi's point, um, I, one is I'm voting in favor of the ordinance, I gave my reasons because of Mass. General Law. Two is the reason I gave the example of the middle school project, and it's, it's a one-on-one ethics. We all, our city clerk tells us every year, we go online and we have to answer those questions and do the, the tests for ethics. It's right there. Your employer has something to benefit from something, you gotta be careful how you take a vote. Even though it's nothing to you, it might be something to your employer. I get it. The employer is the school department and there might be some ways to, to wiggle around that and maybe the state would allow them to vote on it. But I, I used that as an example because I believe in ethics so much and I think the intent of the ethics ordinance was about making sure we understood how important ethics is. But Mass. General Law to me is the important thing here and I, I believe in Mass. General Law and that's why I'm voting to, uh, to strike the ordinance.
Anyone further? Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, uh, first I'd, I'd like to have a question for Legal or anyone else in the room that would care to answer it.
Alright, so motion is...
Well, I guess it's the rules. Point of order, or...
Alright, motion is suspend the rules, ask a question of Legal. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Sullivan, what's the question?
So, um, come January third, uh, if the two elected counselors are seated in their challenge, does it take a simple majority or a supermajority to remove them?
That's to Legal?
And the se, well, I'll give the second part of the question. Are they entitled to vote?
So is that, uh, Mike?
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Did, did you hear the question?
Counselor, good question. We have been having some trouble with the Zoom audio tonight, so I'm not, uh, sure how well you can hear me.
We can hear you fine.
You're good.
Great.
Did you hear Counselor Sullivan's question?
First things first, yeah, um, first things first, if there is a challenge after, uh, the council organizes itself an elections president, um, those challenges would not be able to vote on the election of the president. The next order of business would be to take up the challenge. That, those challenges would be decided under Robert's rules by a majority vote. The motion would be to seat and the motion would have to be carried by a majority. Who could vote on the motion? Who could vote on the motion? In the first instance, only 11 members, if there are two challenges, could vote. Once it is decided whether or not to seat the first challenge, the question then becomes if that member is seated, that member can then move to vote and participate in the elect, in the challenge to the 13th member. So in the first vote, there would be 11 councillors eligible. In the second vote, there would be a minimum of 11, possibly 12 eligible to vote. I would also remind the council that come January, the new council will need to adopt the rules and make such changes to those council rules as that body sees fit. And those changes, I believe, would be adopted by a majority vote, the new council. Depending on when that comes in the agenda, that could come either before or after any formal challenges. Hope that answers your question, councillor.
Councillor Sullivan.
Thank you, it does. So my, my two other statements regarding this is, I, I think it's, would be a big mistake just to strike Section G altogether. I, I think that was very well thought out at the time. I can see the need to amend this. These two people were duly elected. I don't see a big conflict with the school department. However, what I do see is by striking Section G altogether, we open the door for union presidents, of which we have over a dozen in the city, to serve on the council. Our council administrative, how's that going to work? Our council administrative aide could get elected? How are we going to handle that? Mayoral aides can be elected? Department heads can be elected? If we simply strike this? Does it need to be changed? I believe so. But I don't believe just simply striking it is the right way to go, and long-term we could create a much bigger problem for the city. Oh, and in closing, it, I, I hope some people do their homework. It really scares me to hear an incoming councillor say that city ordinances are a mere suggestion. That's all I have to say.
Councillor Bacon.
I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone further? Councillor Bartley?
I just can't vote a question.
Oh, I thought you said our discussion. Okay. So motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading.
All those in, councillor?
Second.
Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, I've, you know, I've been trying to work my way through all this for the last several weeks. Some of what councillor Sullivan said, I definitely agree with. I, whatever needs to get done, first of all, I'm very confident that the procedure that attorney Miss Annett has brought up is going to bring the two elected councillor elects to be authorized to be on a city council. I'd be shocked if, if that is not a correct statement come January. But it would be a lot better if we could do something where we would avoid the challenge. I would much prefer the city council get going in terms of cooperation rather than in terms of the challenge. But that's, that to be said. But I do think, both with councillor McGivern said in terms of, I, I've seen a ruling from the state ethics commission, which does lead me to believe that they would not be allowed to vote on the school bond, because it does have a direct impact on, on the school budget and the school system, so, and that's where they're employed. And that's, you know, clearly it's an education issue, it relates to finance, but it's an education issue. But I do think, whether it's this council or another council, there are positions that should not be on a city council, that are employees that should not be on a city council. And whatever we need to do to enunciate those and explain, probably in greater extent, explain why they should not be able to be on a city council makes sense. And then the other question, and this goes along with what, let's just say we had five people from one department that got elected to the city council. Any financial thing to do with that that required nine votes would never be able to be passed. I mean, there, there are, I mean, obviously, potentially that happening are probably not great, but, you know, we need to make some consideration on that as well, so. You know, I do, the election was held, the election was there. I do think there should be some part of the ordinance that is brought in to make sure that, I, I agree, I mean, if, if the mayor wanted to have some people get elected, obviously the mayor's in a pretty prominent position in terms of electoral politics, that certainly would give them an advantage. But, you know, it's, it's just not, I mean, the election is the election. And I have to make one other comment because since, I don't think councillor Leacy meant it personally to me, but when she talked about the word two person getting chosen and not being a person of color, I certainly hope that in my three years, I have tried to represent every one of my constituents to the best of my ability, regardless of color, regardless of language, regardless of gender, regardless of preference. And so to me, the most important thing for any councillor is not that you look like everyone else, but that you are there to try to serve everyone. And I honestly believe I have done that, and I, I'm sure councillor Leacy did not mean that personal, but please understand that it came out that way. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councillor Hernandez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I think that the, the strikeout of this is necessary at this time, and I think that the new city council could, you know, deal with the details of, and deal with who can vote or not vote. But now, the important thing tonight and on this vote is to strike out and to allow these people that were elected through our community to be able to serve as council members. Thank you.
Anyone further? Councillor Anderson Burgos.
I won't take up too much time because everybody has their opinions. I just simply want to state that one person, and I'm not mentioning names or name, one person sounded the alarm. One person who has a lot at stake. One person who likes to control things and be an obstructionist and bully. And I've dealt with that myself from this one person who's bullied me. But I'll tell you this right now, you are all kidding yourselves if you can't see the cards being played in front of you. You can't tell me that an ordinance that was crafted in 2017, in a charter that's 125 years old, because here's the charter. Charter is what we usually go by, it's like our bible. And then the ordinance is how we craft it to sort of, I don't know, make sense of the community we live in, right? You can't tell me that an ordinance that was made in 2017 covers the charter. No, the charter covers that. Like the reason, it's like, it's like, this is a safety net for that obstructionist, is what that is. It's a safety net. It's to make sure that people, I don't know, less fortunate, people of color, specific people in the community do not get into these rooms. And I'm going to reassure everyone who's listening, who's in this building, who's watching on TV or wherever you're watching, that it's not going to stop. We're going to keep coming, and by numbers, things will change. This ordinance is not for the people. Maybe one person, the person that brought it up, the person that keeps screaming, the one person that keeps calling individuals, no, hey, I didn't interrupt you when I was talking, when you were talking.
I have a right to ask for a point of view.
Yeah, well, I'm just, please.
Councillor Anderson Burgos has a floor. He has not mentioned names.
Yep, not mentioned a name, but I'm telling you right now, I'm ruffling feathers for sure. So I will say this, please, don't do this to yourselves. Trust me when I say that, do not do this to yourselves. This is not a threat, this is a promise. All eyes are on us. We can make this right. 2017, what was passed was a mistake. No one's going to call me to try and change my mind on that because I see it as clear as day. Thank you.
Councillor Leacy would like to speak for a third time, we'd have to suspend the rules to allow for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Councillor Leacy. Muted. You're unmute. Councillor unmute.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify the point that I was making that councillor Murphy raised just a moment ago, and it's just that I'm not talking about representation of the seat, I'm talking about the impact of this 2017 ethics ordinance is having a disproportionate impact on, on people of color, because we have three examples now where this ethics ordinance has pushed viable candidates to the side because of the way that it is impacting who can run and who cannot run in this community. So I just wanted to put it out there, it was not a targeted comment at all, it's just raising three examples that we have and showing how it is having a negative, disproportionate negative impact on the Latinx community of this city. Thank you.
Councillor Bacon like to speak for a third time, suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, councillor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be brief. I would just like to point out that tonight there was only one person who came to the microphone who was shouted down. It was the person who disagreed with the majority of people coming to the microphone. What we need to be able to do is to disagree civilly. The behavior of shouting people out, snapping people down, calling them out at the mic because they disagree with you is not the democratic process.
Quiet, please. Order in the, order in the room. Councillor Bacon has a floor.
And I'm the second person this has happened to. So we are going to have to be able to maintain civility in the face of disagreement. If this is early indications, we have a long ways to go.
Councillor Hernan.
And the law was not designed to harm anybody, but it did, if we change it tonight, disenfranchise any and every other city employee who would have wanted to run for office. Thank you.
Councillor Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I disagree completely, and the person that didn't come to the microphone, without saying names, did come in, and he was the aggressive and the one that was not acting civil, and took more than a minute. Everybody else had their minute, and he just wanted to rule over the Mr. President and this honorable body here. So let's get that straight, first of all, and second of all, the rules, it's proven that the rules have been made to disproportionately discriminate and marginalize people of color, so let's not kid ourselves, and it's time for a change. Thank you.
Councillor LaBarn Martinez.
I am actually, so my boggles here, sitting here, my last meeting, actually one of my second last meetings before I leave, and I have so much hope for our community and everyone here who's run for office. And starting to say to my grandkids, and I'm hoping that they're not watching because sometimes they watch this, because, you know, this was my hope, that someday they believe that we had a chance in, in sitting in this position. And, and the reason I say this is because here we are, and if I'm not mistaken, and nobody has, I've been trying to search this, but I recalled two individuals who were working or at least serving in our council. One of them came forward on the mic, inquiring about coaching, and I believe it was our task collector, I'm not going to say names, sometime years ago, maybe four or five years, and this person was getting a stipend to be a coach at the public schools. Secondly, we had a, a request for that person to be a promoter for the football team, if I'm not mistaken. And I believe also there was a stipend included, and not only that, his own personal son was playing on the football. How much of the ethic and under, how do you, how would I say, unfairness, it's, and we've forgotten about that. Sometimes there's certain things that we can forget and put under the rug and do not recall when it is our turn to be, you know, on the spotlight. But again, there's a lot of heartfelt, our community is watching, I'm hoping that this encourages people more to really, really get out, register to vote, and vote the right way, for us to, to, to get a chance and to get ahead. The struggle and the, and the, and the challenges continues, this is not going to be over. I just wanted to say that because it is something that I wanted to be in the records for the future generations to see, the challenges that some of us had in order to be here. And it is something that needs to be historically said and, and to be somewhere where it can be proven that we worked hard to be here. So thank you all.
With that, one point of clarification, because it came up, and I don't think it was clarified by me at the ordinance meeting, the reason it was filed in this fashion, I did speak with legal, that would be our city solicitor, that's Lisa Ball, at length on this issue. So it wasn't a knee-jerk reaction as to how to file it. I went to her specifically, because I have a lot of respect for her as well as her legalese. It was her recommendation to file it in this fashion for many reasons. There is going to be another attempt on the ordinance to deal with the issues that, when it was first adopted, and that's what I mentioned at the, at the ordinance meeting, the intent, under my belief at that time, was city hall employees, no offense once again to city hall employees, but there was, as pointed out, a mayor's aide could try and run and be a mayor's aide and be on city council, a treasurer, a collector, a assessor, an auditor could run and try and be on, and therefore there would be a perceived notion of a conflict of interest. That's how I remember it, that's how I voted for it. That was our deep discussion, Lisa Ball and myself. And Lisa said, file it this way to first address the issue that it wasn't intended to be all encompassing. I also spoke, or dealt with, he left a message and contacted me by email, former city councillor Mark Lubold, who also I have a high respect for because of his knowledge and detail, of which he said, if you look at the ordinance as is, it is too broad, and no one in this room, no one should serve on the Boys and Girls Club, should serve on Wisteriahurst Museum, you can't serve on anything and be a city councillor. Please, I, I said stop, we don't need that here. Respect, please. The intent was city hall to stop a conflict that was boiling up way back when. It didn't intend to go this far. So through Lisa Ball and myself working on this, this is how we drafted it. I don't disagree with the comments that we still have a conflict of interest if something like a city hall employee, let's get no offense to them, tried to come in this way to serve on the council, and there could be a perceived conflict of interest. We shall have that discussion, an order will be coming to address that in ordinance, to then define who, who should be. It's a hard define to deal right now with the timeline that we have. Once again, it wasn't intended to be encompassing towards school committee or school department or what have you. So I'm addressing an issue that came up, to fix that issue, to move forward, and then address the other issues that have come up. The timeline has done that to us. I hope that clarifies the issue. I hope that clarifies the issue. Anyone further? Motion was passed the second reading.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Oh, motion is to pass the second reading. Counsel Murphy raised his hand before he could take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the amendment.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Greeney?
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
No.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leecey?
Yes.
Eight a's, five nays.
But your vote does not approve.
I'll make a motion to refer it back to committee.
Motion is to refer, motion is to reconsider our actions.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Say the ayes have it?
Yes.
Make a motion to refer it back to committee.
Motion to refer back to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, to ordinance it is.
Motion to go number four, Mr. President.
Number four is a letter reappointing Mimi Panage, or Miriam Panage 134, to the planning board, which will be a five-year term, ending June 30th, 2021.
I make a motion, Counselor President, for all the appointments, reappointments into public service, so the new public service, chairperson could bring the mayor in and find out exactly his thought process.
And I'll second Jimmy's motion to suspend.
So, four, five, and six. Motion to suspend the rules. Take up four, five, and six and refer to public service.
Yep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven is...
Motion to receive incentive finance.
This is from the order, which is the city financial statements. That would go to finance.
Copy to finance.
Copy to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion, receive the number eight, please.
Number eight is the recount for November 19th, 2021, from the city clerk's office. Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to receive number nine, please.
Number nine is from, it's the minutes of the October 19th and November 16th meeting. Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Number 10 is a communication from the assessor's office regarding the first writ of refusal for chapter land.
Yes, Sir President.
So, this one?
Yes. I'm gonna make a motion to refer to DGR, but I don't make a comment.
All right, so to DGNR, Counselor Bartley.
Yes, so that, read this closely. So, to all counselors, just read this very closely. It says convoluted, complicated stuff, but just make sure you understand what's being said in here. We'll have a further discussion, or somebody will have a further discussion down the road in DGR. But this is relative to the properties on Mountain Road. And so, we're gonna wanna have, we're gonna wanna have, as somebody once said earlier, a robust discussion about this matter, okay? So, just please, just be very conscientious about this. Don't just skim over it. Thank you.
All right, to DGNR, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 11 is for the CPA, extension recommendations. This is funding and extension recommendations, which is Valley Opportunity Council, War Memorial, extending those payouts.
Well, I think this should go to finance. Joe's gonna have a meeting on Monday. You wanna do it, Joe?
Well, if I could, how many projects are there?
Looks like two. So, Valley Opportunity, actually, so two for them, which is 348 Chestnut Street, historical rehabilitation, 337 Chestnut Street housing. And then War Memorial is 310 Appleton Street rehab.
Okay, that's fine, yes.
Both, so 50-50 and War Memorial, there's no amount.
Yeah, just point of order.
Yeah.
I don't tend to have another DGR this term, so, and Finance Chair's gonna have a meeting on Monday. So, I think it makes sense to go there.
So, to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
12.
Motion received.
Received.
Motion is to receive, and that's the Fire Commission meeting for October 21st. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 13.
Finance?
Is a letter for Megan McGrath Smith to Community Preservation, increase in salary, so to Fin, what did you say, Finance? Was that what you said?
Well, I...
If I got just a question, is it by ordinance, though, the salary?
No.
No, because it's through the CPA.
Through CPA.
That's us, Joe.
Yeah, so that's us.
That's us only, it's not the others.
So, that'd be Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Parac letter appropriation for fiscal year 2023.
Copy to Finance.
Copy to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? From Kevin Jordan, letter of resignation from the Hoyok Water Commission, effective January 2nd.
Take a motion, we don't accept it.
Motion to receive budget on discussion.
Well, Mr. Counselor McGivern, what'd you say?
Don't accept it.
Counselor Bartley.
Mr. President, just, where are we with, because tonight, we just named a chief assessor. And I don't know how we, I mean, I would have done anyhow, but I'm just not really sure how we, you know, I don't know really if it was... I don't know what the procedure was that led up to this, frankly.
So, I...
I remember interviews for this, but...
No, I filed an order to, Tony Delude reached out to me to get someone appointed, so then you could then fill the assessor.
We're gonna fill it, yeah, so, but we got the, no, I was good with it, Todd. But what I'm, and we're filling the rest of the incumbent's term. Because as we know here, but maybe new counselors don't know, we appoint, we have sole authority to appoint the assessors.
Right.
So, that's, right, well, you and I know it, but we know it here, but the new persons don't know so well. So, with the Water Commissioners, we have a similar duty. So, with, I think we're down at one, so...
We have two now. This would be effective January 2nd.
Who do we, who are the two we have?
Kevin, Kevin Jordan.
We have Kevin and...
He's still on until...
No, right, but once this happens, we'll have, we'll be down at one.
And we have an order in Public Safety to fill the position for Parr, who passed away.
Right.
So, it is in there.
Public service.
Public service, that's what I meant, public service.
Okay, so just, my question mark is, do we have an order to fill this one?
No, because he doesn't leave until January 2nd.
Right.
That's why.
So, we need to wait till it's official?
Right, you still can fill Parr's position. That's open, but Kevin's you can't fill because he's not leaving until January 2nd, so that'd be next year.
Okay.
Counselor McGivern.
Do we know the term of Commissioner Jordan?
It was a three-year term, I thought. So, I think it...
I don't know.
That we'll have to check on.
Yeah, because I think his term might be up. And the reason I say that, I believe he's the chairman this year. And I believe he's resigning because the Water Commissioner's terms aren't, we vote on him in January, but the Water Commissioner's terms, I think, start in February. Then I think this will take care of itself. It's gonna be one of our appointments, it's gonna be, it will be vacant anyways.
Right.
At the end of January. So, it'll be something that we can vote on. It'll be an open seat.
Right.
Right, which we usually do, but they don't start until that magical day, I think, in February.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that one was...
Received.
Received. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
16 is from Brian Smith. It's his resignation from the retirement board.
Motion received.
Motion is received.
Stephen giving a heartfelt thanks from all of us for not just on the retirement board, but is your services honored?
All right, I already added with him.
You're here.
17 is Hoyok 2 Historical Commission.
Motion received.
Motion is received. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 18 is a cover letter and resume of interest for the CPA.
Suspend and take 18, 19 together, ship them off to...
Public service.
Public service, please.
So, 18 and 19 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And these are members who are looking to serve on the CPA, so send it off to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Petitions, special permit.
Ship to ordinance, please.
So, 20 is a petition for green grab.
Actually, suspend, take 20, 24, and 25 and ship them to ordinance.
Second.
So, 20, 24, so 20 was the green grab, 24 is 876 Grow, and 25 is the hybrid house. All two ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to suspend, take 21, 22, 23 as a package. They're all renewals, subject to all the fees et cetera being current.
Second.
And it'd be a motion to approve.
So, motion is take up 21, 22, and 23 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. 21 is a renewal for a salon at 45 Longwood. 22 is a home occupancy for a plant-based non-dairy at 267 South Street, and then yoga at 415 Ingleside. All taxes been paid, so motion is receive and grant the renewals based on the conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? President's report. Just quickly, there will be a City Hall Christmas party, December 22nd, at 5:00 PM at Pix Place. Everyone here is invited. Also, the Christmas party for the city council. I know we did get a date for that. We're trying to work new dates because of conflicts that have popped up, so I'll keep you posted on that. But, the City Hall Christmas party, Pix Place, December 22nd, 5:00 PM, everyone here is invited. The party for us as a group will update you accordingly.
Yeah, thank you to the mayor and to the city clerk for the invite. I already, ours has been paid. Thank you.
It's your favorite place?
I can offer better dough.
All right, so due to time, we are on to ordinance. Which is, first one is the ordinance committee, 26A.
We did it.
Did that one.
Sovereign disposed of.
Sorry, 26B, committee of ordinance who's referred...
26B and C and D as a package, please.
D, C, and D.
Second.
Take as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So, 26B is 136 Beach Street, remove all the handicap sign. 26C is 58 Bridge Street. Recommend that, refer a handicap sign be placed at 58 Bridge Street. And then a handicap sign located at 24 Hampton Street be removed. All been recommended to be adopted. So, motion will be receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor Leecey.
Thank you. They're all amendments to our traffic ordinance related to handicap placards. Two of them are being removed. One is being claved. And they all have been vetted by the Commission on Disabilities and have the recommendation where it's needed.
All right, so, any questions? Motion is passed the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to pass the second reading.
Second reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to, that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for all three.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley? Greeney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Leecey?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley, did you wanna vote?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Will you vote, you approve those three? 26E?
Mr. President, there was another item that left ordinance and never made it on the agenda here, but we do have a legal form regarding...
I have it, Counselor. So, motion is suspended. We'll take from committee, an order that should have been here, but it didn't make it. It was the, I'll read it, what I've been told. So, order that the marijuana ordinance be amended to correct, one, the site plan review process, 71065B, and two, the reference to Table 4.3, principal use in 71053A. And it has a legal form to it that came in. Am I reading the right one, Counselor?
Yes, it's that order, and we have legal language that says, Section 1, Appendix A, entitled, "Section 7 dot 10 dot 5 dot 3." And there's an A in section 2 is where the B is, and then section 3 and 4.
All right, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. My understanding was we were supposed to get the legal form to be able to look at it in ordinance and then bring it to council after our next meeting. We voted to put it in legal form, but we had a recommendation from planning that had a zero buffer. We had back and forth discussion about what the legal form should be, and there was further communication from the chair to legal. It needs, we need to see it in committee and then recommend it to the body.
Okay.
No, it was actually voted out three to two.
Right.
To bring it to the full council today.
Yes.
Three to two. You did not vote for this.
But we didn't see...
Counsel Murphy did not vote for this.
Right, right, but we didn't...
As the majority of the body of the ordinance committee voted it out in legal form to be before this body today.
All right, so it was voted out of committee, three to two. We have legal form that was provided today.
Right, at like 4 o'clock.
I'm just trying to catch everyone up as I received it. So, that is what's before you, so it was voted out, it should have been on the agenda, so you're not really removing it. It's, it actually should be on the agenda. It's a miss. So, with that, this is item 42, as I have it, but as I read it, that is what you have. Now, there is something that, Jeffrey, what was the issue? So, there is a correction, so motion to suspend the rules to ask legal? A question on what they sent. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, Attorney Bissonette, there's a correction on the legal form already?
Peter, what number is this?
It's item number 42 that was sent in as a late file communication from the legal department, which is the amendment to Section 7 dot 10 dot 5 dot 3. It may need to be amended to 6 instead of 3.
Oh, okay, I got it right there.
Counselor McGee, what is the, what is the order that I filed say, there's a section...
So, on the order, it says, "Site plan review process 71065B2, principal use in 71053A." When you go to the ordinance change, it refers to 71053A, so that's fine.
Yep, that's fine.
Deleting, and this might be it here. It says, "Section 2, deleting Section 71053B in its entirety and placing it with the following language." Is that the typo?
Really, the typo is that there should be, where it's from, section 2 down to what you just read should be deleted. It should all be under the first section.
Mr. President, can we send this back to committee so we can look at it, and it can come to the council clean where people can see it ahead of time?
I'd say motion would be to table it to have them fix it.
Okay.
Because it was voted out.
Motion to table. Okay, yeah, it was voted 3 to.
So, motion is to, I ask, is the motion to table?
I made a motion to table.
Second, second, all, debate ends. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, so now to 26E, Joint Committee on School and Council. School was referred. An order per school committee referred to the Joint Committee of the City Council School. Review proposed transfer of school committee land near Dean High School, which abuts Ingleside St. Vincent. Review with the city engineer drawing and taking votes whether to recommend approval or transfer recommended. The order has been complied with. Counselor Leecey. Is this Joint Committee? Oh, I thought it was under ordinance. All right, so Joint Committee?
I'll speak.
All right, Counsel Murphy.
She asked me to look at some things here, so this is something that myself and Counsel Bartley had filed regarding St. Vincent and Northampton Street, and trying to see if we can't, first of all, right now, it's got branches falling. If you go up Route 5 right now... If you go up Route Five right now, there's another fence that's got knocked over. The goal here was, and I did meet with the city engineer, I think Counselor Bartley also met with the city engineer. I, we would need to make a zone change, but it has a potential, and it's just a potential, of having a developer maybe be able to put two houses. One on the north, northerly side of St. Vincent Street, just above the parking lot, and then one up on Ingleside Street at the corner of Ingleside and St. Vincent, the northerly corner, which could do two things. Number one, make that sidewalk be a homeowner's responsibility, obviously bring us some tax revenue, make the sidewalk safer for the students that do have to walk up and down that, especially in the winter. But even now, you know, it's, it's just not an attractive-looking oper, facility. And the school discussed it, they, they asked if there was potential ability to use it for the school, and after three different meetings, they finally came to the conclusion that they did not expect that they could really have any functional school use on, on that corner intersection. And so they did recommend that they would transfer the property to the city. If that happens, the city engineer will work with developers to kind of give them an idea as to what the possibilities are, and then potentially, we may have someone wanting to buy the property. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, so this probably should be just, you know, motion somewhere just, just to receive and adopt the committee report. So, but just under discussion, there was a letter, Mr. President, dated eleven twenty-nine, twenty-one, from the, from HPS, signed by the committee vice chair and the receiver. Was that on our agenda? Or is it a late file?
I got the sheriff.
Yeah, it's okay, Mr. President, because we don't, what I'll do is I'll forward it to the clerk, and she can post it to the next agenda. It, it simply says that, that the HPS school board took a, took a vote, and they voted to transfer the before-said parcels described by the or two counselor to the, to the city. And so when that comes before us, that, that should go to DGR for, as to whether or not the city wants to accept it. So that, that should be a discussion there, so. There's no rush whatsoever on this, but I think the fact is, if I may, and we'll talk about more at the next meeting, but I, I think this is potentially very good news, very exciting news, and to create brand-new housing, whether it's a single-family or duplex, in a, in a, in a, you know, small corner of the city that probably could use some, some attention. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll make sure this is forwarded to the clerk to be posted as a communication to the next city council agenda. Thank you.
So this one is motion that's been complied with?
Yeah, that's all you need.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So twenty-six F, G, H? And I are all complied with. You want to take them up as a package and go over them?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So twenty-six F, the joint committee met efforts to make documents transparent. The work of the Hoyok School has been done under receivership. City council invites Anthony Soto, interim receiver, as well as the cabinet-level members and possible representatives from DC to go over metrics on which students achieve, are evaluated, progress, where they are thus far, that they'll need to release from their leadership, recommended that it's been complied with. G from the joint committee, that the city council invited the middle school building project to discuss the city council's role, eligibility, period, timing, meetings, et cetera, that's complied with. Twenty-six H, joint committee to discuss potential transferring of the school property on Dean campus at the intersection of Vincent, so that one, kind of repeat, I think. Twenty-six I is the joint committee with the receiver to discuss potential benefits providing cursive writing instruction in early grades, hand-eye coordination, so on and so forth, recommend that it's been complied with, and report be provided by the end of school year. Under discussion, Counselor Martinez, with regards to all these?
Yeah, okay, so, um, number, the item that, that was filed by Murphy and Graney that the joint coun, um, sorry, joint council, school committee meet the receiver to discuss the potential benefits of the cursive writing. We, we had a discussion, and my apologies, I do not have the notes in front of me. I switched my bag, and I realized I don't have it. But, um, the receiver and the curriculum instructor, what was, I forgot her name, I'm sorry, her name, she was here, she was, they were, she was on Zoom, and, um, Soto was, the superintendent was here presently, and explained how the curriculum and the standard by the DESI recommendations, it's what they're using, and that not necessarily means that the, the cursive is being completely removed from this system. They want to consider, actually after the discussion, a way of possibly like, um, considering a, a survey of some sort to determine how many other teachers are really continuing to use the, the cursive teaching. If anybody else can help me with that piece?
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I mean, there's a lot of things, and I do want to thank the, the committee for taking it up. I want to thank the superintendent and the education professional come in, but there, I really want to address this to any people with kids in school, and any people who are going to have kids in school. I mean, all, and it was admitted that the research definitely indicates that cursive writing as a part of the curriculum actually improves the potential of educational learning for a variety of people, and yet, we did not know in our system how much we are actually doing, and the only thing right now that is mandatory, or that the goal is that they have to have, is that they can sign their name, period. And I just want to, I do want to read a few things, because I did a lot of research on this, and I'm just going to read some of these things. These are from professional reports in Governing Magazine. Learning cursive is excellent for honing fine motor skills in children. When writing in cursive, both the right and the left hemisphere of the brain show increased activity. This simultaneous hemisphere activity is known as right-left brain synergy. This brain activity promotes memory and language functions. Right-left brain synergy does not occur when using a computer keyboard or when writing in print. Learning cursive helps increase writing fluency due to the smooth continuous lines. It makes it easier for these students to convey a thought in writing. One of the things that came up at the meeting was that they are trying to help students be able to convey in writing their thoughts. Here's a clear example that cursive is, is the way to go rather than print or on a keyboard. Cursive is also helpful for dyslexics, as the letters do not look as similar to one another as letters do when written in print. And I might add, after that meeting, I did receive an article about the benefits for dyslexics from someone who was at that meeting and did not offer any comments then, but did talk about some of the things that they would like to see for their, for their kids. And it's just, I mean, I think, and I know they say this is not part of the state standard, but we are free to do more, and it seems to me like we are shortchanging our students if we are not teaching them cursive, which also stimulates their brain to do other things, both creative writing-wise, language-wise, and all the others. And I just hope, I know we've asked for a six-month report, but I hope in the interim, we accelerate learning in cursive. And I just got a thing on dyslexic saying, as early as the first grade, I know we're talking about teaching it in the third grade, first grade actually helps stimulate reading abilities. And all of those kind of things are deficient in the Hoyok system as we are dealing with. Other states are making it much more prevalent, and are having good results, and I just hope that our schools, I know they were respectful of the thoughts, and I'm hoping that parents will touch base with our schools and say, hey, why aren't we teaching as many kids as possible cursive? If those are the benefits, and if they're not the benefits, then let's explain that. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to echo exactly what Counselor Murphy is talking about. I think that when I was at Kurland School, I was learning Delanian, I think it was called Delanian handwriting, many years ago, but I think it adds to a lot of creative writing, journaling, and just, I think it adds, I think it really helps the child become more educated. And as, as Counselor Murphy had said, I remember in a graduate school class, talking about the brain development and that sort of thing, is when they're reading the cursive and they're writing the cursive, it makes the left side or the right side work harder, I forgot exactly which, but I think it's very important, and I didn't realize this, and I think all the parents at home should call their, I don't know if they should call their school committee members, but, you know, they should call somebody to figure this one out. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, I, I agree with both Counselor Leahy and Counselor Murphy. If you really think about it, I'll just make a quick comment. So if you really think about it, when you're writing, you're thinking about what you're writing, right? You're, you're using your thought, your mood, and it really becomes part of you, your, your personality and everything that's written down, and that's, that's development for your personality, for yourself, and I think that's very, a very important part of education. It's, it's, I mean, we've been writing forever, you know? So I just wanted to point that out, and I think we should really ask for this to be part of the curriculum, a huge part.
Counselor Graney?
Just quickly, I agree with Counselor Burgos. It instills a sense of individuality and uniqueness in an individual student. It's theirs, it's their own possession, it's something that they identify with, and it's very important to have self-identification and awareness of your own self in education. And I think it's a very important step in a, in the education of a youngster to be able to accentuate this characteristic that we all have of individuality. As a matter of fact, if you look at history throughout the years, there are autographs, people's autographs who have been prized over the years, you know, sports figures, actors, actresses, all young people, older people, these, their autographs are prized. So it gives somebody a sense of uniqueness and self-accomplishment, and I think we should explore it.
So twenty-six I was about the cursive writing. Twenty-six H was already what we discussed about the property near Dean. Twenty-six G was the update with regards to the middle school project. Is there an update on that through the committee?
That's, that's the one with the letter from the mayor, correct? That's the one that, um?
From superintendent.
I think there's a communication that came in on that from Aaron?
There is a communication?
I thought, I thought there was.
Yeah, there was, um.
Yeah, it's a presentation, it was like a PowerPoint presentation slash communication, I'll call it.
Yeah, um, but the, the one with the, um, city, with the, the one with the school committee building, that was, it was based on the other one. It was on the order, I'm sorry, it was an order on, on the request from, for the superintendent or DESI to go over metrics, which our students achieve.
That's twenty-six F.
That's the one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, there was a presentation by Superintendent Soto regarding information, the status of where we're at with our, in metrics, showing where we're at with our students or children in our school system, and he shared how, I believe, the first year, due to the nine, twenty nineteen, there's not enough data, and twenty due to COVID, there's a delay on some of the reporting, but he went into what's been happening in regards to our attendance issues and the setup that we have, and how we were making progress a little bit, and then all of a sudden, due to the COVID, we sort of like went back down a little bit. So there is a presentation, that a slideshow that people need to look at if you're really concerned about what is happening in our school system, so that anytime you see a child out and about, to encourage them to really stay, you know, learning, because the challenges are even worse as they're not participating. What else? And it was basically a slideshow of all the activities that they're trying to help with this situation for kids to continue to be in school.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, and they did give a good report. I thought they tried to compare where we are versus what the state standard is and what the recommendation is, but, I mean, there's definitely, one of our problems is attendance, and right now, obviously, with the pandemic and everything else, that's very difficult, but prior to the pandemic, our attendance was a major problem when we had, I believe it was close to twenty percent that were excessively absent. That's one, once out of every five students that were missing, I believe it was at least ten percent of the school days. And I know they're trying to make, I know way back, they talked about, and this is one of, I kept bringing asthma up, because they talked about asthma as being a major cause of students being out, but there are other things that are not asthma-related, and we've got to find a way, and we've got to make sure that students and families are held accountable to make sure that their child does get to school, because they cannot learn if they're not there. And that is one of the things that was very clear in the statement, that, that is something they, we have to do a better job on. Obviously, the pandemic makes it difficult, but once the pandemic's over, we better figure out how to handle it, or we're going to continue to have, you know, far too many students absent and far too many students not graduating when they should be graduating.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize, are we acting on all these together?
Yeah, took it up as a package.
Okay, speak about a couple of them?
Just one. Okay, yeah, sure.
I'll be, I'll be semi-quick. Middle school project, very informative, learned a lot, not just from the joint committee, but also from the members of the, the building committee itself. There are some tight timelines coming up, and there's a lot to be discussed at our level. There's a lot to be, I think, you know, the, the schools are much further along than we are, but what I pointed out was, is that the next step we need to do, and we can't do it until the mayor initiates it, is a bond or some type of an appropriation to pay for the design select, design selection process itself. Unfortunately, one of the things we did learn is that the MSBA is put, allowed us back into the hopper, but they are not going to reimburse us for the design selection. So I think we have to get that discussion going quickly, but we really need Mayor Garcia to put that in front of us. But I was impressed with a lot of what, the work that's been done by both committees and where we are with that. I thought we were talking about cursive writing, and I, I don't know, Peter Tomlin and I both failed the Sisters St. Joseph's cursive writing courses, so neither one of us could talk about that, but I would like to talk about the order about the transfer of land on Ingleside, Counselor Bartley's original order, and I know he's been very on top of this issue about, about doing some building on some potential lots on St. Vincent and up by Route Five there. The, I, we learned that the school committee has voted in favor of transferring that land out, and, and I think that's fantastic, because I think it's a great project that's going to benefit the, the city and benefit the neighborhood and everything. Aaron Burnell did say that although the language is not there, the school committee is asking that we take some of those proceeds and put them back into Dean's school, similar to what we just did recently when we took the money from the sale of old equipment and allowed Dean's school to reinvest that into some of their, their programs. And I, I think it's, if it's doable, I think it's, it's something worth taking, looking into, but if you look at the order, the order says to recommend that we approval of the transfer. I'm not sure if we vote on this particular order to accept the transfer.
There is no transfer yet. This is.
Or we have to wait for the transfer?
I, we're still going to have the transfer come in.
Okay, then I'll stop there. I was just making sure that that's where we were.
Counselor Bartley pointed that out.
Yeah, just to clarify, just through the chair, to the finance chair, the, what's, what's happening is, I, I just, we received a communication dated eleven twenty-nine. I've. I've, that they voted on it, and they want to return the, but they want to send the land to the, to the city. So I just forwarded that letter to the clerk, and she'll post that to the next agenda. And then from there, it'll go to DGR, and then we'll, we'll take a vote, or somebody will take a vote in, in January, I guess. Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll say.
All right, so F, G, H, and I have been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Under the post. That brings us to Finance. 27A, Committee on Finance referred an order that the City Council and the Mayor and the Law Department review the J&amp;J settlement agreement. Order at the, for Hoyoke to receive funds awaiting disposition.
Make a motion that we receive, pass, and adopt.
Motion is to receive and adopt. Our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Okay. The reason I say receive and adopt, because we learned, and this is Counselor Bartley's order, so I'll turn it over to him in two seconds. We, we learned, I think, some fantastic steps have already been taken. Mayor Murphy signed the, the deal that would allow the city to get into this agreement. We know that in the future, an appropriation would have to come before this body. It looks like, and, and I, I don't want to throw it out, but I know it's around $45,000 annual, and a lot of it goes, all of it goes towards doing things about the opioid abuse crisis that this, this, not just this city, but this country is facing. And this, you know, these, I think there's even the possibility of additional monies coming down the road. But a fantastic order, and it was good to hear the, the report, both by Mayor Murphy and Counselor Bartley.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I, I, I think the, the finance chair summed it up pretty well. I was hopeful, Mr. President, that we would have a late filed order tonight from the Law Department confirming that they indeed sent down the, the communication to the Attorney General's Office acknowledging Hoyoke's interest in participating in this, because that was, what was expressed to us last night in Finance. If, if we don't have it, then I would just ask the Law Department that is, they're present here tonight, I believe, that just send it to the clerk so she can post it to a regular agenda for, for, uh, the 21st. Is it, is it on there? Todd? Okay. All right, no, it's no, no big deal. But what, what the, what the finance chair said is, is spot on. I, I, I knew it when I, well, when I filed the order, Acting Mayor Murphy said that he was on point, and I said I, I wasn't surprised. And, and so it's been approved. It, it, and basically, J&amp;J got nailed with a lawsuit, billions of dollars, about half a billion's coming to Massachusetts. Every municipality that's eligible has to express communication to the AG. That was the letter I want to get from the Law Department to confirm it. The mayor was in Finance last night. He agreed. He said he wants to see that letter, and we, it should be a public letter. So we want to get that posted to the 12/21 agenda. Essentially, it comes down to this, Mr. President, that once it's green-lighted in, in Boston, they'll figure out the, the funding. It'll be over the course of 18 years. The, the Acting Mayor said it was somewhere around 45. I read somewhere around 40 something. The Law Department said it might be, that that might be the, the floor, that the ceiling could be higher because of Hoyoke's need. The fact is, it's going to be spread out over 18 years. The mayor is going to have to come up with a game plan, how to use the money. At some point, we'll, we'll get a communication that we have to set up one of those 44A accounting forms, and we'll take a vote on that in Finance. But, but basically, is, this is all good news, and I, I think it's, it's going to go along, well, it's going to go some ways towards, towards combating a crisis. Thank you.
So this is to receive and adopt, and then we're waiting for legal, correct?
It, this is to receive and adopt, and we'll, we'll get a communication from legal for the next meeting, and then we'll get more down the road.
Okay. So Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, very well discussed, and thanks, Counselor Murphy and Counselor Bartley for putting this forward. I think it's really important for having this, this money coming into the city for over 18 years. And as the Law Department said, I believe it could be the low number, 40, 45,000. But I believe it stated that in March, we'll be receiving the, the grant for that, and probably receiving it every year since forth. So it's, it's important to help combat the opioid crisis and to truly work towards helping out with the homelessness issue in, in our community.
All right, so no one further. Motion is to receive, adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Under the post. It's stuck here. 27B, Committee on Finance was referred.
27B remained in committee.
Oh, it did? Okay.
Yes. There's a financial transfer coming in, which was, we have some questions about it, so we're going to take it up at our next meeting.
Okay. So B is still in committee. 27C, Committee on Finance referred amount of $9,705 be authorized for the Computer Services Department, professional consulting. $27,457 be authorized for Police Fire Network Administration, awaiting disposition.
Make a motion to receive, pass the first reading.
Motion is received, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thanks, President. We had, our city auditor basically spoke on this one, although Lieutenant Hart was present in, in terms of, these are invoices for Wally Computer. There are two different line items. A real quick reminder, and then I'll just give the recommendation. Wally Computer, the IT services, once was its own, own budget itself. Then we took it out, and we put the line items, one was with the Police Department. We asked to bring that together and put it under the mayor's office, who at some point transferred it to the purchasing office. Regardless, these two invoices slipped through the cracks at the end of last year. Our, our auditor keeps apologizing for some things she missed while she was not fully at work, and I wish she would stop apologizing, because she's been working incredible even when, even when she should have been at home. But she has vetted both of these invoices. They, they are correct. They were correct, and they are money that the city owes to Wally Computer. We're just, what we're being asked is to allow, because it didn't get paid out of last year's budget, that we allow the line items for this year's budget to pay the, both of these bills. She says there's enough money in the line items that are being, that would be used.
All right, so motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. Clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
12As.
Your vote, you're approved. You're approved. 27C. 27D, Committee on Finance referred an order that the auditor reports to City Council on collection efforts for police detail work.
Make a motion to receive and adopt.
Motion is received and adopt. Our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. We had Counselor Bartley's order first, and we did have Lieutenant Hart and our auditor, Tanya Dojek, before us. We had a good discussion. We learned about where we are. The, the good news is, the auditor pointed out that the, in, the deficit is down from a little over a year ago, when we had our last discussion about this. This is, is in relation to police employees, officers, working outside details and how they're paid, and how sometimes we run into a deficit because the vendor did not pay properly or did not pay in its entirety. But the, the amount, at one time in 2020, was $240,000 in, in the red in deficit. In 2021, it's down to $155,000. We learned that the 10% fee that we agreed to is, is being collected, about 155,000, I believe, I'm sorry, not, not that much, about 13,000, 1900 have been collected in different, from different vendors. But unfortunately, by state law, we, we cannot put that directly towards what we had hoped, the deficit. We have to bring it into the general fund and then look for transfers to do it. But still, it's, it's, it's something that's, that's going to help out in the future. What we essentially learned was, we've gained some, but we still got a long ways to go in this area. There, there, the current year appears to be that, that the, we, we made some suggestions, but that the, that we're not creating any new deficits in this area, but we're still trying to figure out how to correct the, the past deficits.
Right, so motion was to receive and adopt that's complied with. Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I think that was a good, good summary, Mr. President. The, we, we also, it was, it was very helpful to have the mayor here last night during part of this discussion. It was, I, I, I think, I think the mayor was making some notes and, and trying to get his, his arms around this problem, as well as his, how many other problems there are in the city. But we also learned that the, the mayor, the auditor, and the Police Department are going to get together and try to come up with a little more proactive solution. We also learned that HPD is not warm to collecting funds in advance from vendors. That wasn't clear as to why they're not warm to that, but that, those are the words that were said. So we're, we're going to have to, we're going to have to hear more about that. We also asked the auditor to, as a pro forma basis, to send us quarterly reports on this matter. And the last point we made was, those of us that read the, the financials for FY20, by the way, realized that we got dinged again on this same issue, that we've been dinged at, how many fiscal years in a row? And this is just FY20, never mind FY21, never mind FY22 is going to become. So you know these are going to be recurring themes in our financial reports. And I'm, I'm mystified as to, as to why we can't, we can't solve it. But like I said, the mayor was here last night, the auditor was here last night in person. So Lieutenant Hart was on Zoom, always helpful, and we'll just take it from there. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, it was a good meeting, and seeing, noting that we went from 243,000, 155,000, and making some improvements and trying to get that deficit down. And I think we brought up some suggestions, and I think the mayor, it was great having him here, to try to figure out how we can tackle this issue and, and try to get where the vendors are, you know, pay on time. And, and the other issue is trying to find out, how do we, how do we go back to some of these vendors that, oh, from 10 years ago? How do we get that back? I know the auditor stated that to write it off, but I think the mayor stated, let's hold off and see what we can do to try to get the Law Department to try to get some of this money back. I think that's important. But from, you know, saving 90,000 from one year to the next is, is a big improvement, but we still, still have a ways to go.
Seeing no one, Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, one, one point I'd like to make again tonight is, this is a situation that could be easily rectified in, in any normal business before a bill is paid. Any, any voucher, any, any paperwork that comes forward to authorize the approval of payment to that vendor, right? The work has to be accomplished. And one of, one of the things is, the vendor has to have paid the city for the services rendered by the Police Department. And the simple solution, beyond all of these other accounting things that we've heard, is just simply deduct it from the check if they haven't paid it. It's that simple. It's done in business all the time. I don't know why we're not doing it here. I've suggested it multiple times over the years. And it's much simpler with the other alternative is, to make them pay in advance. The Water Department does that before they'll issue a permit. You gotta, you gotta pay if they're going to have a Water Department person there, they've got the four hour minimum, how many hours you're going to be working, and you pay for in advance. We heard all the reasons why that's a little bit complicated and then officer. Fine, the whole thing can be solved very easily. You just don't pay the outside contractor unless that box is checked. It's that simple. Thank you.
Seeing no one further. Motion then, it's to receive, adopt, and complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Under the post. 27E, can we have?
I could suspend the rules to take 27E together with 27I.
So take up 27E and I as a package, suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Under the post. So E is 11,800 from Motor Equipment Repair to Overtime. 27I is 26,400 from Heavy Motor Equipment Operator to Refuge Other Services. Motion, we receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had Amy, I want to say Amy C., I got to learn how to pronounce Amy's last name, but she was before us. Fantastic, you know, presentation. She's on top of, I think, I think a lot of what's going on in the DPW. The, both, the transfers are coming from the Motor Equipment Repairmen. We've heard this in the past, but she pointed out that there have been vacancies, a number of vacancies in that position, and that's the hiring problems and, and a number of things going on. Not just, you know, it's hurting the DPW, but hurting a lot of industry and hurting a lot of, and even in the private sector, where trying to fill vacancies is very difficult. Besides the, the, the surpluses and those, that line item, she explained that the money is going into the first 27E into, into overtime, and then the second into the Refuge Other Services. There's, because of the vacancies, there's a number of things that, including overtime, for employees who are working, that are, that are working extra overtime to stay caught up with the, you know, with the services that they're providing, especially with the refuse and recycling efforts. And there's also, as we learned sometime earlier this year, some temps that are being used to fill into a number of these positions that are vacant. So I, I, I think that's the gist of what the transfers are about, but the committee does recommend that the transfers be adopted.
Seeing no one else, it's pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call, if you vote yes, you're voting for 27E and I as a package.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve those. 27F, the Committee on Finance was...
That was, that remained tabled, Mr. President.
That's tabled?
Yes. At the DPW's request with reason.
So it's tabled in committee?
It's tabled in committee, yes, yes.
Okay.
We're going to learn more, and then we can, I think we'll end up disposing of it, but we don't want to note it to, to January.
How about G?
Uh, G, that we receive and adopt, the motion is to deny.
All right, so 27G, Committee on Finance has referred a request of 107,500 for, or is from Heavy Motor Operating Parking Control Officers, Parking Maintenance, to several other items. Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading, to deny. Our discussion, Counselor McGivern.
I, I want to go through the details, because there's some late filed stuff coming in and make some suggestions if the body is willing. But the transfers, again, Motor Equipment Operators, vacancies all year, that's why there's a, a surplus. Parking Control Officer, 5,000, there's one, one position was not filled for a good part of the year, so there's a surplus. And Parks Maintenance Man, same thing, there's a surplus in that line item. So the 107,000 is the, of the first six line items it's going into, which is repair and maintenance. If you look at our budget, these are there, these are, these are line items that are used for a number of different reasons throughout the year, very well followed. But earlier, or late last year, earlier, I'm sorry, earlier this fiscal year, there's a transfer out of this budget to offset and pay the roof for the, our building down below here that houses the Volleyball Hall of Fame and the Children's Museum. And the, they were taken out of the repair and maintenance accounts, and I don't remember if we were told that it would have to be replaced, but we're being told now that these monies need to be replaced. Two of these items are already at the red. We reminded Amy that you can't spend when you're in the red. You can only spend what you got, and she understood. Mayor Garcia understood too, which I was impressed with. But the, the purpose of putting the money back in is this money is used by each, each of these respective departments, whether it's repairs, maintenance, and, and supplies that are necessary to keep the, the buildings going. We have, in late file, we can, we can wait till we get to late file. We have, in late file, we can wait till we get to late file, we have these all separated out because the fourth item, the 65,000, we have some major questions about it in committee. There's a communication, I don't know if it's a late file communication, but there's a copy of it summarizing a, I believe it's a contract with the sheriff for the use of labor that I've known for some time has been used in the city through Mike McManus and others. I didn't know we had to pay for it. And we'd like to look at that in more detail. So, when that comes in late file, we'll ask to put that in committee along with the letter so we can take it up again and try to get some answers. Motion to deny is because we cannot separate these items out ourself.
I'll second that.
So, what was that, Counsel McGivern, the last part?
We're recommending we deny it because we cannot separate the financial transfer ourselves.
Okay. So, based on those reasons, the motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is to pass the second reading, to deny. If you vote yes, you're voting to deny. I know it's kind of backwards, but that's how it works. Clerk will call the roll.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Counsel Rainey did have to go home just for an update. He was having a slight issue with his back, so hopefully feeling better, but he did have to excuse himself. Twenty-seven I, committee on finance has referred, or we just did I, so we are on to twenty-seven J.
Twenty-seven J.
Yep, twenty-seven J, the committee on finance has referred in order to accept funds from the HG&E and enter into the ESCRO agreement to pay off their 2012 general obligation bond. Motion, we receive, adopt. Our discussion.
I make a motion to pass the first reading, and if, I think, if the law department or auditors listening, they can correct that, but I'll explain it, then we can make sure that's the correct motion. Essentially, the, both our utilities, three, or three, the county wastewater treatment plant cannot bond, general fund bonds without coming through the city, although it's the ratepayers who pay off the bond itself. We had Jim Lovell with us and Brooke McMahon with us, both excellent presentations and well on top of their game. Essentially, what they're looking for is permission from the city in two, well, it's two areas that's going to be combined, but for the 2012 general fund obligations that they owe, they're looking to take advantage of some low interest rates. And by doing it and allowing them to go into this agreement, they would, looks like, save close to $5 million total. And there's also some MLEC bonds out there where I got, the committee's going to help me out here. I got a little bit confused. Their GEO bonds, I'm sorry, their MLEC bonds that they get a rate through MLEC, which the city is a member of, I understand that. And there's a $69 million bond through them. But again, the rates are so low, they're, it's just an incredible time to do some refinancing and to be able to pay it off. Now, the other part was, is they need to put this in an ESCRO agreement with the city so that it will pay off the general obligation bonds as accordingly, as appropriately, as time goes by. We feel it was fantastic news for the, especially for the ratepayers, you know, that there's going to be a big savings here. And we recommend that we take the appropriate vote to adopt both, allowing the gas electric to do that and to set up the ESCRO account.
So, motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Your vote, yes, you're voting for this item.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Counsel Rainey did have to go home just for an update. He was having a slight issue with his back, so hopefully feeling better, but he did have to excuse himself. Twenty-seven I, committee on finance has referred, or we just did I, so we are on to twenty-seven J.
Twenty-seven J.
Yep, twenty-seven J, the committee on finance has referred in order to accept funds from the HG&E and enter into the ESCRO agreement to pay off their 2012 general obligation bond. Motion, we receive, adopt. Our discussion.
I make a motion to pass the first reading, and if, I think, if the law department or auditors listening, they can correct that, but I'll explain it, then we can make sure that's the correct motion. Essentially, the, both our utilities, three, or three, the county wastewater treatment plant cannot bond, general fund bonds, without coming through the city, although it's the ratepayers who pay off the bond itself. We had Jim Lovell with us and Brooke McMahon with us, both excellent presentations and well on top of their game. Essentially, what they're looking for is permission from the city in two, well, it's two areas that's going to be combined, but for the 2012 general fund obligations that they owe, they're looking to take advantage of some low interest rates. And by doing it and allowing them to go into this agreement, they would, looks like, save close to $5 million total. And there's also some MLEC bonds out there where I got, the committee's going to help me out here. I got a little bit confused. Their GEO bonds, I'm sorry, their MLEC bonds that they get a rate through MLEC, which the city is a member of, I understand that. And there's a $69 million bond through them. But again, the rates are so low, they're, it's just an incredible time to do some refinancing and to be able to pay it off. Now, the other part was, is they need to put this in an ESCRO agreement with the city so that it will pay off the general obligation bonds as accordingly, as appropriately, as time goes by. We feel it was fantastic news for the, especially for the ratepayers, you know, that there's going to be a big savings here. And we recommend that we take the appropriate vote to adopt both, allowing the gas electric to do that and to set up the ESCRO account.
So, motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Your vote, yes, you're voting for this item.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Next is thirty-B, DGNR Committee. Commande dGNR, who was referred that the city council, workbook plan department aim to redraw the ward lines according to the new federal census, recommended that be adopted.
Motion is to receive and adopt, the committee report.
Second.
Motion is receive, adopt, under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, we've had probably, Counsel McGivern filed the original order probably 10, 11 months ago. We had numerous meetings over the course of the year, then we kind of took a break, and then we got back into it in December. So, basically, what all that boils down to is that we're making two slight changes, one in Ward Two, one in Ward Five. So, it was, I mean, I actually learned quite a bit myself, but there is essentially no real changes to the city ward maps. What I also advise is that we are certainly on time to get this to the Secretary of the Commonwealth. They have until the 15th to remit it. And so, we're going to, once we take our vote, I think we might have to sign a document tonight.
Yeah, you have to.
Okay.
I have it.
Okay.
It will be going around.
Okay, so it doesn't surprise me. We've, the clerk and the clerk and the president work well together, I think. So, so that's, so that's good news for the city. And then, yeah, so I mean, I think that if everything's going to stay the same, I mean, I think the work council know where the wards are, and the at-large counselors are good to go with it regardless. So, it was, but nevertheless, it was very productive. There's a lot of good work done by the plan department, so they certainly need to be credited. And of course, the DGNR committee that did put a lot of time into doing this as well. And so, I just recommend approval. Thank you.
Todd?
Counsel Bacon?
Thanks. I would just note too that there were a few precinct changes, so for those folks who are affected, they will be getting notice because they will be changing their voting locations. So, that'll be great. Thanks.
Seeing no one else, once again, we'll have a roll call. We vote yes, you're voting for this, but remember, you're taking it on all three of what I just wrote into the record. With that, the clerk will call the roll.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approved it. So, the letter reads, we, the undersigns hereby certify that the meeting on December 7, 2021, the city council voted to accept, as presented by the city counselors, the 2020 re-presenting plan for the city of Hoyok. I will send this around. The clerk is at top, as well as I'm on the side, and then all their names underneath will start from here, your name and your ward, or if at large, and then when it comes back around, we'll collect it. All right, so that was approved. We're on to thirty-C. Do you want to package some of these, Counselor?
No, we're going to take separate votes.
Okay.
It's a little confusing, so.
So, thirty-C is command dGNR, who is referred in order at the city council, according to master general law. Thirty-B, declare Clemente as surplus, approximately 5,314 square feet, assessed value of 34,500.
So, motion is to receive and adopt, the committee report, declare that for said parcel surplus available for disposition.
Motion to receive, adopt, under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
This is, this, we're going to take up thirty-C, and then we're going to take up thirty, if that passes, and that requires two-thirds vote, we'll have, then we'll take up thirty-H thereafter. These are parcels at Clemente, and this is part of the project to, for the South Hoyok homes. We got a really great report on what's happening there, the number of homes being built. It sounded, I'm going on memory, I think it's somewhere around 16 to 20 single-family homes, and then on top of that, there's a lot of new units being created for rental, rental units. These are for the single-family homes, they're going to be supported with ARPA funds as well. So, the infrastructure's in place, now they want to get the lots to develop the property. So, the first step is to declare thirty-C as surplus property.
Thank you. Any questions? The motion is declared as surplus property. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're declaring it as surplus property.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Back to thirty-D. Thirty-D, this is also from DGNR, that it's declare Clemente 007, the last one's 006, surplus property.
Motion is receive, adopt, the committee report, and to convey the property to HRA for a dollar.
Motion is receive, adopt, and convey, under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
Well, so what's going to happen here, and what's going to happen with the next series of orders, is that we're going to send it to HR, hopefully if we approve this, it takes a majority this time, not two-thirds. Surplus is two-thirds to convey, it's simple majority. And the HRA would work with the HHA to develop the properties, and this is according to the, to the citywide plan as well. And the committee, I mean, certainly, there was a good discussion about this. It led into some other ancillary issues relative to HHA, though I, I'm sympathetic to them, and I frankly brought them up before. It's slightly off topic. So, the committee voted to support the conveyance as written. Thank you.
Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, I just want to thank the committee for taking it up. This is the two parcels, if they both pass, that will be eight single-family individual homeowners on Clemente from about Carlos Vega Park halfway to Sergeant Street. And there are an additional five or six houses that'll be built on the other side of Clemente Street going towards Hamilton Street. There are 12 apartments that are currently being built on the corner of Southeast and Hamilton Street, 12 apartments, four buildings with three apartments in each building, and a really nice-looking design. And then, there are other lots on Southeast Street going towards Sergeant Street, and then Southeast Street from Sergeant to Adams, which have a potential for another, anywhere from 12 to 18 additional homes and/or some additional apartments similar to what is currently being built. So, I mean, I think within the next three to five years, that entire section around Carlos Vega Park and on Southeast Street and Clemente Street will significantly be revitalized and also provide additional homeowner opportunities, as well as some economic diversity, which hopefully can help the businesses on Cabot and Main Street to have additional customers in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Our motion would, is receive, adopt, and grant the...
And convey the property.
Convey the property, thank you. Clerk will call the roll.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Nope.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, one nay.
Your vote, you approve that one.
Back to thirty-D.
Thirty-D, this is also from DGNR, that it's declare Clemente 007, the last one's 006, surplus property.
Motion is receive, adopt, the committee report, and to declare the property surplus available for disposition.
Motion is declare it for surplus, under discussion, Counsel.
Yeah, for the four said reasons, same thing, then we'll, this will need, this require a two-thirds vote, Mr. President, to pass.
Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to declare this one surplus.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Uh, motion to suspend, Mr. President, and take 30I out of order.
So D was approved, 30I, suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, this one is to take what we just declared surplus and convey it to Hoyok Redevelopment Authority.
Motion to receive, adopt a committee report and to convey the property to HRA.
Motion is receive, adopt, for conveyance, under discussion.
Yeah, I just want to echo what, uh, the Ward 2 councillor, uh, mentioned, uh, again, this is, this is really an important, uh, development, and it could be a real game-changer for, for this, for this part of the city. And, uh, I, I, I think we can take a lot of pride into, into what's, uh, what's being developed here, and, 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 you know, we've got, you know, we've got a pretty good partner in, and with a, with a pretty good track record in, uh, in HA, Hoyok Housing Authority. They've got a lot of experience in developing homes, and, um, I mean, most of it's been ve- very good, and, uh, I, I think this is just going to be an example where the, uh, the, the city can be, uh, ve- very proud of what's, uh, of what's happening here, and to create, uh, create new housing. I mean, we're, we're, we, we, we read articles all the time, Mr. President, about, especially what's going on in the eastern part of the state. I mean, they, they just don't want to create dense housing, uh, for multiple reasons, and, uh, um, and, uh, I, I don't think the, we don't have to go into them right now, but they're, they're just, um, you know, a lot of NIMBY stuff going on out in, uh, the pretty little towns around Boston. But, but I think Hoyok should, should take some pride in, in this, and that we, we want to create this kind of housing. It's, uh, I think it's going to be important for the, for the long-term sustainability of the city, and, uh, I'm going to, um, enthusiastically endorse it. Thank you.
Councillor Sullivan?
Yeah, the reason I voted against the last one, I'm also going to vote against this one, is, um, not because of the intent of it, but because in Hoyok Housing Authority, we have, uh, an entity, the largest, uh, um, real estate holder in the city, um, which only pays a, uh, pilot of $4,000 a year. Uh, and to be conveying these properties for $1 with assessed values of $30,000, $35,000. Um, and they're, they're also free to sell these properties, um, which, after, after which the, the monies go into their funds, it doesn't come into the general fund, uh, we have no control, no say over, uh, how that money is spent. They're sitting on $5 million in cash in their bank accounts, um, and yet we're conveying for $1, and that's my hangup with it.
So you know, in further, clerk will call roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the conveyance.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Nope.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Eleven yays, one nay.
Mr. President, can we suspend and take 30?
Your vote, you approved that one, yes, councillor Bartley?
E and 30F as a package, please, an abbreviated reading.
Motion is take up E and F, of which E is from dGNR. It is a vote for a sale of 277 Main Street for $5,000 to Next Realty. Uh, 30F is another sale of 285 Main Street for $5,000 to the same.
Motion is receive and adopt a committee report, give both these leave to withdraw.
Motion is receive and adopt, give leave to withdraw, under discussion.
Yeah, the, the OPED came in and it sounded like there was, uh, uh, a hope that they could convey these two little side pieces to the, uh, to the abutting property owner, and, uh, they were making some progress, and they, they struck a deal, and then the, uh, property owner, uh, who really seemed like the most logical person, uh, to them, just kind of didn't return any phone calls. So, they, uh, OPED said to, uh, to give a leave to withdraw, and they'll, they'll put them, they'll put them back out on the, uh, on the market. So we, uh, agreed. Thank you.
Alright, motion is give leave to withdraw, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Uh, 30G is for 86 Beet Street for $15,000 to BEX LLC.
Uh, motions to, uh, receive, adopt, a committee report, and to approve the, uh, sale of the parcel.
Motion is receive, adopt, under discussion.
Yeah, so th- this is a, um, a gentleman that was before us, uh, a, a short while ago, um, with a, a similar lot in the same block, and at that time, we, there we, it was a little bit complicated, we, we had to do a, a variance, and we had, then we had to approve the sale. In, in this case, we're, so, so not, but now we have somebody with, uh, with a track record, and I think those of us that gone by his, uh, development can see that, that it's, uh, I mean, it looks, it looks nice, a- and, and they're, they're going to, uh, uh, you know, add, add to the, add to the neighborhood. The, uh, th- this is going to be a similar type of a situation, there's going to be a, uh, it's an empty lot, and there's going to be a duplex put on there. This is not going to add to the congestion of parking, uh, is, so we, we learned that, because the, you know, access, uh, so it's going to be ample off-street parking through the alleyway. Um, so that's the same way with 102, and the same way with this one at 86. And, and we, we had the, uh, we had the developer before us, and he gave us some, uh, details, and, and we, uh, we were glad to have him, and he answered our questions, at least he answered my questions, and we, I believe unanimously approved the conveyance. Thank you.
Councillor Sullivan?
Yep, thank you, and I'd just like to make the point here, here we have a private developer willing to pay $15,000, yet we have a, um, quasi municipal that's only willing to pay $1. Yeah, we go ahead, and if anybody wonders why the last, uh, uh, the two orders that we just, uh, gave leave to withdraw, uh, for Next Realty, why, why did they back out of the deal? Why didn't they respond? Well, here's two lots that nothing could be built on, yet we wanted $5,000, and they sit there and watch a lots that are worth twice as much go for $1. There you go. Great business.
So motion is to grant the conveyance. Clerk will call the roll.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy? Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approved that one. There was no charter rules, joint committee, we've already done. On to motions, orders, resolutions, 33 from councillor LeBron Martinez, and a handicap sign, uh, be placed in front of 70 Walnut Street. To ordinance?
Ordinance and the commission.
Copy to the commission?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, 34 from councillor Lisi, that the mayor, that Mayor Garcia initiate the financial transfer to create a capital stabilization fund, that was approved by the, uh, finance committee and full city council. Motion be received?
Uh, receive, adopt, and refer to Mayor Garcia. Um, I would also just note, uh, that even though the, uh, finance committee and the city council voted to, um, support and create the stabilization, uh, sorry, capital stabilization account, uh, our acting mayor, councillor Murphy, at the time, was also, um, in conversations with Cinder to identify which source of money may be best, and I don't know if our, um, councillor Murphy has any, uh, information to relay to the new mayor at, around that, those points.
Councillor Murphy? Nope, okay. So this is receive, adopt, and send to the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We took here 35, 36 from councillor McGee, councillor McGivern, that the city council vote to set the MRF for fiscal year '22 tax classification. Send that to Finance, because we're waiting something from the state, councillor McGivern?
No.
How would you want to do this?
Um, I, it's up to the body, I, in past years, we would just take that vote, the, as, as we all know, the, the Assessor's public hearing took place, uh, last week. We have this yellow book in front of everybody if you weren't at the meeting, or didn't watch it on Zoom, you know, that explains our options. The issue we have right now is the state and the auditor, or the outside auditor, are still working on balancing the budget in the area of some deficits that are in question. The only reason in past we could take this vote, uh, switching the, if we want, the tax shift, um, but there is a scenario where you, there's some wiggle room in the, uh, the levy, and, uh, the mayor could actually use, not saying he would, but could use additional dollars. Because of that, we could take a vote tonight, but the actual bills themselves could change. So, I, I, I mean, the, the hearing has been done, we got the explanations, Finance can't do much more, I think we just have to table it and let the, uh, wait until we get the final recap sheet.
Do we know approximately when they're going to give that?
It, Tanya told me today that she hopes it's all going to be done next week, because I, I, unfortunately, it could mean a special meeting, being that we, um, our final vote is the last vote, if we do turn, if we do decide to shift the, uh, the, uh, tax burden, that once that vote takes place, if the, if the budget is balanced, and the final recap sheet is in, that's when the tax collector can send out the bills. It has to go out for the third quarter before the end of the year. So we are under the gun.
I did speak with the assessor, and the 21st would be late for getting the bills out, so it would have to be a special meeting. Just saying. Councillor Bacon?
Uh, just a question, so if we do set the rate tonight, the only thing that could happen is if additional monies are needed, it would actually, the rate would remain the same, but the bills would actually be higher than the numbers we have in front of us?
Councillor Bacon?
Slightly, I mean, is that what we're?
That's, that's the way I understand it, and I, not sure if the auditor's with us, but, um, that's, the, that's the gist of it, you know, is we're, we're, that's, the one area is there are deficits that are being looked at by the outside auditor and, and the, uh, uh, DLS. Councillor?
Councillor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you, I, I kind of want to do what councillor McGivern wants to do, is table it, just for the fact that we're going to be voting on something, we don't know exactly what the numbers are. I don't think that's fair to our constituents.
So, is there a motion to table?
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion is to table, under discussion.
I, I, can I ask a question?
Yep.
In that debate, um, if we table it, you can still put it on a special agenda?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So motion is to table, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So that has been tabled. 37 from councillor?
Make a motion to suspend the rules to take up items 37, 38, 39, 43, 44, and 46 as a package, and refer them to Finance.
Second.
So 47 is $2,495 to pay, uh, aid to mayor, 38 is $9,610 for bike share, 39 is a grant for $14,400. 42, no, 43, sorry, 43 is 800 longevity to overtime, 44 is $2,565 from longevity vacation buyback to assistant director, executive director. 46 is the HUD home, uh, looks like another grant. So all those to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Make a motion to suspend the rules to take items 40, 41, and 42 as a package and to adopt this evening.
Second.
Motion to suspend rules take 40, 41, and 42, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. 40 is from the firefighters to injured on duty, uh, $2,296.78, of which there's one. The 41 is from the police for injured on duty, uh, $15,243.66, of which there are five. 42 is $17,999.84 for injured on duty for the police, and there is five as well. Motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Councillor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President, this is the, uh, the accounting move we make just about every, uh, every meeting we have, to, uh, show in the public safety, police, fire departments, when an individual is injured on duty, maybe very temporary, could be a little long, long-term, that their salaries remain the same, but they come out and put them in different light items for accountabilities of actual dollars being spent on, um, on service, and actual dollars being spent on injured while in the line of duty. We recommend, recommend it be adopted tonight.
So pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, clerk will call roll if you vote yes, you're voting for all three.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approved those. This brings us to, if I read it right, 45?
Correct.
Okay.
Make a motion, receive, pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, pass first reading, this is in order to use $1,699,874.78 from the ARPA revenue loss as a, uh, fund resource for the budget. Motion is pass the first reading, under discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President, the, these are the dollars that we've actually talked about, accepted, and, uh, worked with Mayor Murphy at the time, uh, it was the formula that was, uh, looked into to see how much of the ARPA monies we could use for, for revenue loss during the, uh, the, during the pandemic, uh, that those early years, or the early, uh, part of the pandemic. Um, Tanya, our, our auditor, Tanya brought it to my attention, that we need to take a vote this evening to place this on the recap, recap, recap sheet, and the reason we're doing that is this is the, uh, right now, the final step of, uh, what we can do for balancing the budget, and the only other area after this would be the, uh, state with the outside auditor and DLS looking at the deficit, some possible deficit fundings that they may want us to put on the recap sheet itself. So by adopting this this evening, I'm not even sure if it takes a first reading and a second reading, but just to be safe, we're putting it on the recap sheet.
Any questions? Seeing none, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, clerk will call roll if you vote yes, you're voting for this.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approved that one. Uh, 47 from councillor Sullivan, at the Hoyok CPA annual budget, article, uh, 2022, November revision, request that the city council vote to appropriate the reserve of the community preservation annual revenue in the amounts recommended, and there's a list there. Councillor Sullivan?
Uh, motion to receive and adopt.
Motion is receive, adopt, under discussion, councillor Sullivan?
Yep, uh, so what's happened here is just good news for the city, uh, this, the state match came in much higher, this is, uh, uh, something we voted on several months ago, it's just how the funds are allocated, 5% goes to, um, administration, 10% for historic, 10% for community, 10% for open space. ten percent for open space. Um, so this is the budgeted reserve. Um, we, we've, we've already done this. It's still all the same percentages, we just now have a higher number to work with.
So the original state was based on a 32.3% match. The state guy updated at 39.4%.
Correct.
Any questions? The motion is to receive and approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do you want a roll call for this, Counsel Sullivan, just in case?
Just in case.
Yeah, so clerk will call a roll, just to record, cause I know it's not a traditional financial transfer like we normally do, but we should do a roll call.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Tomlin.
Yes.
Vacan.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes.
LeBron Martinez.
Yes.
Leacy.
Yes.
President, if I could.
Unanimous vote.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Was approved, yes.
I'd just like to say thank you to Counsel Sullivan for serving on the CPA committee as our, our voice and I hope we can keep him there in some capacity because his knowledge is incredible and the way he explained things makes us, makes it a lot easier on our end.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Certainly add to that and, and the C I C as well, so.
Right. The school building committee. Forget that. It was on that too, wasn't it?
And, and now the transition, transition team, Pete.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right. It's a guy.
The hits keep coming.
Yeah.
Forty-eight is from Counsel Sullivan and Vacan. Uh, that the city adopt a temporary moratorium on the issue of a special permits for M M E.
Go to ordinance.
To ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Forty-nine is from Counsel Vacan. The Comcast improved quality and consistency of internet phone uh, for user in Hoyok. A written report um, along with the review of the ten-year contract.
Um, if I may, just briefly, um, my order is filed at the request and feedback of residents in Ward Five. And so I do wanna be specific in putting it forth tonight. I don't know if there are other issues outside of Ward Five, but I was asked by a representative of Comcast to add some specificity to the order um, relative to what areas might be of concern. So if other counselors are aware of other areas, um, I've made the areas in Ward Five known to Comcast.
Okay.
Um, but I would amend my order to Ward Five if there's no other Comcast issues throughout the city. I don't wanna imply that there are if they're just in a limited area.
Do you want to send this to a committee to get the report and look at it and then maybe we add to it? But if they're already acting on yours, I mean.
Um, I really was thinking to send it over to the mayor.
To the mayor, okay.
Um, because really, he does the contract. Um, but we could put it into public service too, I guess, to.
Do you wanna do?
Track it.
Receive, adopt, to mayor, copy to public service?
Yes, please. But if um, there's no other counselors that I've heard from any constituents relative to issues, then I would just amend it to specify Ward Five.
Ward Six?
Yeah, Ward Six. Any, anybody that, that had, you know, I think all of us should be part of that conversation. We have constituents, I'm pretty sure that.
Well, I just don't wanna make it a problem citywide.
Right, right, right.
In my order if it isn't, that's all.
How about we amend it for Ward Five, see what the report comes back at and then we can piggyback off that? All right, so amend it to uh, internet and general use within the Ward Five area?
Yeah, it's actually going over the 202 hill.
Over 202.
Yeah, once you get over that hill, it's a brave new world.
All right, so amending it to say within the Ward Five area over the 202 hill.
Hmm.
Do it that way? So all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All opposed? Now receive, adopt, send to the mayor, copy to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counsel Vacan is fifty. The ordinance committee review and recommend the ordinance language, uh, changes pertaining to reservoirs, but uh, increase the fines, uh, fifty dollars to a minimum of two fifty, uh, so on and so forth, so.
Yeah, they're just having some enforcement challenges.
Okay.
So um, to ordinance, please?
To ordinance, on fifty, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-one is also from Counsel Vacan. This is a request of the solicitor provide a legal opinion regarding uh, the City Council to issue a special permit for uses that are not addressed in our zoning language, specifically placing a battery storage facility in an R A zone.
Uh, receive and refer to legal, please.
Receive, to legal. Do you wanna respond to this at a certain time?
So I, we need a response here, but if it is favorable, then it would need to go to ordinance, I think.
All right, so receive, refer to legal.
D G R. It depends on the legal response where it would need to go.
While we, so receive, refer to legal, copy to ordinance.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure. And then we could always move it if we need to, right?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. Fifty-two from Counsel Vacan. Have the speed trailer placed at the mountain road near 437 facing Southampton Road due to drivers traveling high speeds. Motion is receive.
Receive, adopt and refer to the police department to get on the list.
All right, so receive, adopt to H P D. Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, just to, or Counsel Vacan, uh, we do have a trailer, it's been there about two months, I'm sure you're aware, on, on Joanne and, and Bemis Road. So I mean, and it's done a good job, but maybe that can be moved over there, cause it's been there about three months now.
Oh yeah, I've seen my speed.
We'll move it around, yeah. It, it works great too and if people are going less than the speed, it says thank you and if you're going over, it just starts flashing, but it's, it's very effective.
I don't get a lot of thank yous. No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. All right. So receive, adopt, send to H P D. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, fifty-three is from Counsel Bartley.
Oh, uh, yeah, Mr. Burt, can we take fifty-three, fifty-four, suspend, put it as a package and ship them both to ordinance, please?
Okay, so fifty-three and fifty-four, take up as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The city amend the ordinance limiting parking in front of the business at 458 South Street. Fifty-four is the city remove the parking sign approximately to, uh, two to 274 South Street and to Brown Ave. Both to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fifty-five.
Oh, receive and adopt and just send it to, to Public Works Department, please.
Uh, City Council send a reminder to D B W.
Gentle reminder.
Gentle, gentle, very gentle reminder about the plow vendor and use uh.
Yeah, it's, it's a little, it's a little tiny offshoot street right across from uh, the uh, uh, general cleaners that they persistently, consistently skip the first several snowstorms every year. Uh, just if they could just plow it, that would be.
Motion is receive, adopt and send it over to D B W as a gentle.
Very gentle, soft.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fifty-six is from Counsel Bartley. The City Council send invitation to the St. Patrick's Parade Committee, including the uh, parade president and its members to appear in the council's second meeting, March fifteenth, to present the awards to the awardees.
Yeah, hallelujah.
Inviting in the band.
Yeah, hallelujah. So hopefully we can pull this off this year, but gosh only knows. So it's just, receive and adopt and we'll just uh, send out the communication. Just, and just, if you just copy to, oh, Jeff knows this, Jeff, Jeff, I'll work with Jeff to get the uh, invitations out.
Okay, so motion is receive and adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There are some late files. So A is a communication uh, from legal. Please be advised that number twenty-third, the city sold 415, 417 Main Street Elliott property uh, with an address of Westfield Road for $10,000. A pilot, a low pilot was $240.20 recorded. So this is regarding 415, 417 Main Street.
What do we do?
This is, please be advised that the city sold 415, 417 Main Street to Elliott Properties.
Did, did we take a vote on it?
$10,000. I'm, I'm just.
I think we did.
Yeah.
I, I think we voted surplus, but I don't remember voting on the sale. And what, I don't know what a pilot is.
And pay.
I never heard of such a thing. They, I mean, you, you can't just send us that communication that, I mean, either we took a vote or we didn't.
I think we did take a vote. Wasn't that the one where they were coming in from uh, Westfield? And it was gonna work and he had the, the next, he was gonna use a lot next door to park his cars?
Yep.
It was, it's a alarm system, right?
Yeah.
Uh, smoke alarm? No, not smoke, sprinkler system.
Tomlin's got the best memory.
Sprinkler system, that's what it was. We did vote on it.
So they're just telling us.
What, we know what a pilot is.
Oh, so, so they're just, they're just saying that they completed the sale.
Sale.
Oh yeah, yeah, we, we vote, we actually voted on that. We did, we voted to approve that, yes.
We did approve that one.
Okay.
All right. So this is just a communication, so receive.
I'll, I'll call, I'm just curious.
So receive, send to Finance as follow-up, okay.
No, I just, you, you can just receive it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, just receive, all those in favor?
Aye.
B is from the sheriff's office. This is with regards to the Department of Public Works, of which it gives a breakdown that the contractors agreed to pay the provider three hundred and two dollars.
Finance, please.
Steve Finance.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Counsel.
Um, Attorney Bissonnet, raise his hand.
I did.
Attorney Bissonnet? Is there something?
Just took it down.
He was having problems earlier, yeah, with the, with the Zoom.
So B is to receive for Finance.
Aye.
C is the U S C D I report for 1459.
Receive, uh, send to Finance?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah.
Oh, the full contract.
Uh, contract, yeah, the full one, yeah. We got the amendments.
It was the old contract, right? It was the old contract, yeah.
Yeah.
So we can compare.
Yep. Then we have a series of financial transfers.
Can I make a, a suggestion, Mr. President?
Yeah.
And it's, we've talked about this earlier and uh, the item where we had to deny it. There are six orders that go from various um, light items that we already know are sur, have surpluses into repair and maintenance. City Hall, City Hall Annex, Hellseer Building, Senior Center, our uh, police and uh, fire station number three.
Yeah, fire.
Uh, two of them are in the red. I, I would suggest that we just adopt all six. We're replacing the money that was removed for the roof at the uh, Volleyball Hall of Fame and Children's Museum. And it's, it's, it's a budgetary item that we approved earlier, I, I mean, for this year, you know, early, late last, uh, late spring. So if, if the committee doesn't have any other questions and the City Council has no other questions, it might be just as easy to pass them.
All right, so I'll take them in order. We have the one for 5,000 from Parking Control Officer to City Hall. Uh, Parking Maintenance Man, 5,000 for City Hall Annex, 5,000. 10,000 from Heavy Equipment Operator to Police. Heavy Equipment Operator, 10,000 to Senior Center. Park Maintenance, uh, Heavy Equipment Operator, total $10,000, adding those two up to the Chrysler Building. And 2,500 from Heavy Equipment Operator to Fire Station Number Three.
That would be it.
Those are the ones?
That would be it, yes.
So the motion would be suspend our rules, take up final action on these six. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading.
I, I, I think it's all been said, the, the surpluses are because of vacancies in the three items and it's repair and maintenance that we use the monies to take care of the roof.
Just through the.
Yeah, so Counsel Bartley.
I, I thought two of them had deficits.
Two of them, and I don't remember which the two were, that were, are already at the red, as Amy said last night, Amy C. Um, they were, they were running in a deficit already.
So the, the fun discussion, so the plan was last night to take the, not pass those tonight, because how can we pass them? So um, unclear as to, I, I mean, I, I would, just as a bonus of caution, I would just take this package, since it's finance, they're gonna meet on Monday anyhow, I would be of the opinion that we should just calmly and coolly and rationally look them over again on Monday as separate financial transfers, cause uh, if we don't remember which ones are deficit, I, I don't really think we can make a vote uh, tonight on this. So I, I don't, I, I just, I think that, I don't think that's the right move. Thank you.
Counsel Vacan.
I would just offer a motion, refer to Finance. I just had another question about what was in and what was out.
That's fine, I, I withdraw my motion.
All right, so D, E, F, G, H and I were the ones I just read. All those to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? J is from Counsel McGivern. This is vacation buyback, $915 to Executive Director, Assistant Director.
Committee of Finance.
Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? K is from Counsel McGivern. This is longevity and vacation buyback for a total of $1,650 to.
Finance.
District Director and Health Services, to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? L is the, from the joint committee, which is the presentation, uh, the communication that we talked about with the slideshow and everything else that.
Motion be safe.
Sent to us. Motion is to receive, refer to the joint committee for their archives. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I think I, everyone's just housekeeping, everyone signed this, no one missed this one, redistricting or re-presincting? Well, he, he wasn't.
Rebecca Leacy, you're doing the digital for Rebecca Leacy?
Uh, and Counsel Leacy.
I, I was there earlier in time, I believe.
The digital for the redistrict.
All right, so.
Oh, I see, I see, yeah, yeah.
All right, so we'll do that. Uh, and I think that is this. We are at motion to adjourn.
Slow move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned.